I'd like to call this meeting of the Willetts City Council, August 23rd, 2003, to order. We'll start with a pledge of the flag. Brittany, can you be so kind as to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dolores, do we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Strong?
Here.
Ms. President?
President.
Mayor Conne?
Yes. All right, and I believe Dolores has a statement to make regarding the minutes of this current agenda.
On item 5A, the record needs to reflect that there was a correction to the agenda. More specifically, the date listed on the agenda for the minutes was October 12th, 2022. The corrected date is August 9th, 2023. There is no further corrections, and the content of the minutes in the packet is accurate as presented.
Thank you. All right, we'll start with public communications. The city council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited -- excuse me if I get rattly. Not quite done with my frog yet again. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person, so that everyone has an opportunity to address the council, to expedite matters, and avoid repetition. Whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request the group appoint a spokesperson. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council, which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the council, its commissions, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. The city council can take no action on non-agendized items. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak to an item that is not on the posted agenda? Please come to the podium, state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Brittany Quanikbar, and I've been an employee of your police department for nearly seven years. I've served on the board of the Police Officers Association for many of those years as well. And though I was able to step down briefly, a recent emergency meeting last night of the membership necessitates that I come to you today as the newly-elected POA president to inform you of the perils placed upon our police department by this city's management. I am present to raise concerns regarding the judgment and fitness of the Willetts city manager, Brian Bender. Under his leadership, the city manager has created impossible odds for the police department and opened the city of Willets to further civil litigation liability. On Monday, August 14th, Sergeant Jordan Wallstrom, as the vice president, spoke with the city manager and human resources manager of an officer's misconduct within this department, and the city manager terminated him just days later, this last Friday, August 18th. Why? The police chief was unaware of this decision. When asked by the chief that evening, as Sergeant Wallstrom was gathering his belongings next door, city manager Brian Bender's response was "Because I can." Interestingly enough, the city manager has chosen to execute the power to release an employee during their probationary period without cause. Yes, it is unusual for a city manager to make a decision without the police chief. However, it should be noted that tensions are particularly strained between the city's top official and its police chief after his request for the chief's resignation effective September 7th. Important decisions are not made in a vacuum. In May, the city manager called upon the services of independent investigative consultants for an outside perspective as to the relationship between the police department and city management. The return of that report was not favorable to the city's management, and a distinct change occurred, and communication soured. It is my request to council that you review that consultant's report. City manager Brian Bender acts on rumor and speculation. Through his actions on Friday, August 18th, city manager Brian Bender has weaponized an employee's probationary status and opened the city to further liability to disregard serious employee allegations. Following our emergency meeting last night, the Willetts POAs' present members made a vote of no confidence in Brian Bender's ability to lead this city. He has cost the police department's ability to protect this city and meet its needs. Thank you.
Thank you. As I stated, this council can take no action on comments made during public comment. This will certainly create discussion, though, amongst the council. Appreciate your coming forward. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight to an item not on the agenda? No walk and talk tonight?
No.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mark Walker here. Been a resident for a while. What brings me down here today about all this is my daughter lives over there on Central and right there by Monroe and all that, and the bus comes. And this is the third year she's been griping about fast cars. And so I'm here about public safety because the family has moved in on the corner of what would be East Oak and Central down there. And so they run down to her house to get on the bus. And the kids, I explained to them, use the crosswalk when you want to run. Go across the crosswalk, then run down the curb. But they like to run halfway down this, on what would be the east side, and then cross over to the west. So any traffic that's speeding through there, even with blacked-out windows, won't see them, and you'll have an accident. So my proposal would be either start cutting surface streets down to 15, 20 miles an hour to slow them down, or hit them in the bucket box. Start hitting some tickets and get some points racked up and bring them under control by insurance costs. Okay? That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else tonight who would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Name's Larry Aguilera. And excuse my ignorance, but I was wondering why we don't have the air rage alarm that we used to have here, I'm told. You know, I think because of the fires that we've had in Paradise and fire in Hawaii, maybe it's time we brought it back and, you know, warn people at night if there's a fire because, you know, we all know it's behind us here at Jackson. So, you know, it's a question about money, you know, how much is our lives worth? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else tonight with a comment or question on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay. I'm going to close public communications for now, and we'll move on to public matters. The first item we have before us is a written report with an update from the Little Lake Fire Protection District. I understand there's no one here tonight from Little Lake Fire, but anyone interested in hearing the update from the fire district is encouraged to view the update. It's listed on the city's website and in the currently posted agenda. Next item is a presentation and discussion of the Caltrans Willetts Bicycle Safety Enhancement and Road Diet Project for State Highway 20, our South Main Street. Presenting member is our Community Development Director, Dusty Dooley.
Thank you, Mayor Conne. Yes, we have a presentation that we'll be receiving shortly from Caltrans here, and essentially they're looking at completing a striping project to reduce two of the travel lanes. It's commonly referred to as a road diet from their portion of Highway 20, also referred locally as South Main Street. The, what really has driven Caltrans to present this project to the city is the work that happened before on the Willetts Main Street Corridor Enhancement Plan. This was a plan that was adopted by the city back in 2016. It was a plan that received significant public outreach. We created advisory committees, focus groups. We had a week-long Main Street Corridor Planning Fair that included walking assessments, an open house, community workshops. About 250 people typically attended these various functions. There were some other components. Regarding, it had a high focus on that portion of Main Street that has since been relinquished by Caltrans, and you've seen some of those improvements occur in our downtown. But regarding the portion of South Main Street that's included in Caltrans' plan here tonight, there are some broad conceptual plans, including a road diet, that are included in that corridor plan. And at the time, what we, the concerns we were hearing from the community was related to traffic safety, pedestrian safety, the desire to see a sense of identity established in that area, as well as some beautification efforts. And that conceptual plan, including the road diet, was based on an assumption that we would see reduced traffic volumes in that area of town due to the bypass. And I think in Caltrans' presentation tonight, they can share some of those post-bypass traffic volumes that, according to the traffic engineers, would support the reduction in travel lanes. The other benefits that led to a road diet being identified in the plan was the opportunity for traffic calming, for pedestrian safety, by being able to have additional crosswalks, shorter crosswalks, enhanced crosswalks. And then, and then really, there's a lack of opportunity to do a lot of beautification efforts, including things like street trees, because in that end of town, you just have narrow sidewalks. And so by reducing the travel lanes, there was also going to be an opportunity to extend sidewalks and create more of those opportunities for some of the beautification efforts, as well as things like gateway treatments that would, again, serve as sort of helping support a different identity as the way that the plan showcases it. So, Caltrans very much leaned on that plan, and I should also show respect, I guess, to the bicycle and pedestrian-specific plan that was adopted in 2009, and that was something that was led by the city in the One Town, One Vision Community Group. And that plan also called for a Class II bike lane and some traffic calming measures along this plan, and the Main Street Corridor Plan built off of that previous plan as well. And what Caltrans is attempting to do with presenting this project is to help the city implement that previously adopted plan. It's a piecemeal of that plan, as Caltrans will get to in their presentation. Because of the funding source, this really represents an opportunity for, to complete the restriping portion of it, but none of the softscape or hardscape elements that were identified in the full conceptual plan there. And with that, I believe Caltrans has a PowerPoint presentation that they're prepared to provide.
One moment.
We have people still arriving, so I'd like to ask if we could open all of those double doors so that if people are arriving, that everybody has an opportunity to hear or participate with these issues. I don't want anybody feeling like they're stuck in the hall. Thank you.
I'm Andreas Kraus. I'm with Caltrans Traffic Safety, and I am the project sponsor. And my colleague, Karen Kunrod, works with Caltrans, the Department of Maintenance Engineering, and is helping with some of the engineering side of the project. Thank you for having us. So I'll talk a little bit, some background and context. We'll get into the Willetts Corridor Enhancement Plan. I'll give a short overview of the project that's being proposed, a summary of a public meeting we had last week, and then a quick recap.
Can everyone hear him?
No.
Okay, I'll try to stop loud.
No, it's just for the TV.
So for those of you who missed it, I'm Andreas Kraus. I'm with Caltrans, with the Office of Traffic Safety. My colleague, Karen Kunrod, Maintenance Engineering, Caltrans. Louder?
Yeah. We're still soft.
Okay. Doesn't feel like that way here. All right. So tonight, talk a little bit about the background and context, talk about the vision that was presented in the Willetts Corridor Enhancement Plan. We'll give a short overview of the project that we're proposing, and talk about the public meeting we had last week on the topic, and just a quick recap then. So the mission of Caltrans is to basically provide a safe and reliable transportation network for everyone, regardless of what mode you inhibit, whether you're motorized, bicycle, pedestrian. And within that, we have a policy that, it's a newer policy within Caltrans. It's called Complete Streets, and basically, the complete street is a street that serves everybody's needs. So not just the motorists, but motorists and bicyclists and pedestrians and everybody in transit. So that's a newer policy, and that's the default approach that we take to our road projects these days. So here in Willetts, you're all familiar with South Main Street. You have two lanes in each direction with no shoulder, and here, you don't have a center turn lane, and a little further south, you do. So that's the existing condition, and that's what we're talking about today. So before the bypass went in back in late 2016, there was about 16,000 vehicles a day on average on South Main Street. After that, it was effectively halved, and there are about 8,000 vehicles per day on South Main Street.
When was the study done?
This was done in 2018.
2018, okay.
So when we look at, at the public meeting, the question came up, how about bicycles and pedestrians? What are the volumes there? So I went back and looked. The whole, the, we only have data from 2014 and 2015, but on average, these are 12-hour counts, and on average in those 12 hours from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, there are about 240 pedestrians, and this is just at the intersection of Main Street and South Street there at Safeway. So at that intersection, about 240 pedestrians in that 12-hour period on average, and about 37 bicycles. This is just a general graph for bicycle fatalities and serious injuries across the state, and there's just been an increasing trend over the last decade, and that's just background information. It's something that Caltrans takes very seriously. If we look specifically at South Main Street, post-bypass, so from 2017 to present, our records show that there were 51 total collisions. Those collisions, 98% of them had no unusual conditions, so dry, good lighting, that kind of stuff. And about half of those collisions were related to intersections and also shoulders, entering and exiting shoulders. Of the parties involved, the vast majority were vehicles, 91. There were four pedestrians, three bicyclists, three big rigs, and one motorcycle. So these types of collisions or crashes are something that would be helpful. The types of counter-safety measures that we're proposing in the project tonight are well-suited to these types of collisions. So in 2017, Willetts came out with their Corridor Enhancement Plan. Dusty already talked about the extensive public outreach that went into that. And for South Main Street, that plan had a variety of recommendations. One, do the lane reduction, add buffered bike lanes, add crosswalks, do some intersection improvements, add some gateways, and do some wayfinding or signage. And it shows three different alternatives, conceptual alternatives. The low-cost solution, which is essentially just striping. You can see the lane reduction, so one lane in each direction. You keep the center turn lane, and then you have your buffered bike lanes that are separated from vehicle traffic. Then an enhanced frontage, which has some additional cheescaping on the sidewalks and things like that. And then long-term solution ideally shows actually median islands that are landscaped. One thing you'll see that's common to all three of these alternatives is that they all have the lane reduction to one lane in each direction with a buffered bike lane. So what we're presenting tonight is a quick, low-hanging fruit to implement the low-cost solution that has no hardscaping elements on it, no concrete and that kind of stuff, because that's what the funding source will allow for. The rest of the proposed enhancement are possible in the future, and we'll talk about the project funding timelines in just a minute. Additionally, in 2022, the Willetts came out with their safety plan, their safety roadway plan, roadway safety plan, and it had quite a list of recommended safety countermeasures that they wanted to see installed. And of the long list, these are the ones that don't require hardscaping or things. These are the things that are included basically in the project that we're proposing tonight, so upgrading stop-site signage, upgrading the intersection pavement markings, upgrading pedestrian crosswalks, upgrading the retro-reflectivity of the signs, and installing edge lines and center lines. So we have some plans from the city of Willetts that envision various things. The trick is, how do you pay for it? So in a traditional Caltrans project, F Caltrans is going to pay for it, you start with the project nomination, and that essentially gets you into the queue. And you're looking at, when you nominate that project, we're talking 10 years out is when that project is going to get built. And about five years after it gets nominated, you start getting serious about the planning and the engineering design, and then it takes several years to work through that process. It has a public engagement component in it, and eventually you get to the project. So for the alternatives that were envisioned by the Willetts plan that require hardscape, so the street trees, the median islands, all that kind of stuff, that's the process that you need to go through. And we've just identified a major maintenance project that's going to come through in about 10 years, so that project has just been nominated. So there'll be discussions in that project about what parts of the Willetts plan can be incorporated into that product, into this maintenance project in about 10 years from Last year, a new funding program in Caltrans became available for the first time. It's brand-new to Caltrans, and it's focused on simple, quick fixes for proactive safety measures, and it's called HM4. And this is unlike anything Caltrans has ever done before. It's one year, we've compressed everything down to one year, from project nomination through design to contract award. So with those constraints, anything with hardscaping is not on the table. So we're effectively talking about signing and stripeage kind of projects, something that you can do quick, and it has to have a proactive safety component associated with it.
Speaker?
So when, so when this new funding program became available last year, Caltrans said, "We have a well-vetted plan from the city of Willetts to do proactive safety measures, and let's..." We went after it. We chased the money. We got the money, and it'll get you basically that low-cost solution, what you can do with no hardscaping, so striping and signage. So what's the project we're talking about? It has many, but not all, of the elements that was envisioned in the Willetts Corridor Plan. So you have the road diet, the lane reductions, you have the buffered bike lanes. In terms of the crosswalks, we're only going to be upgrading the existing crosswalks, again with better striping, more visibility. The crosswalks that were envisioned in the original plan that are new, that require median islands and things like that, hardscaping, we can't get to those, at least not with this funding source. The wayfinding signs are in, they're signs. The other hardscaping elements, like street trees and median islands, we can't get to it because of the constraints of this funding source. Overall, the project to do the restriping and the signage work is about 1.7 million. This is just an artistic rendering of what a lane reduction with a buffered bike lane might look like in Willetts. So you see the center turn lane, one lane in each direction, a small buffer between the moving vehicles, and then a bike lane. There are several projects, several benefits to this type of project. So one is the traffic calming, and it includes several proven counter-safety measures. The lane reduction, and now, these are national average numbers, but the lane reduction will lead to a 19% to 47% reduction in crashes. The bike lanes will lead to a 49% reduction in crashes, and the enhanced visibility crosswalks, 40% reduction. There are other operational benefits. By removing that outside lane, you have actually improved street crossing because it's easier to cross one lane of traffic than it is two, and you have better sight distance because you don't have that extra row of cars. You're also going to reduce the speed differential, so people are going more or less the same speed through, and it provides equity for all road users. And you start to provide bicycle facilities where none exist now. So the Federal Highway Administration has recommendations for the term, there's different terms, but road diet is the term that they're using. And on the top, you'll see basically the ADT, or the Average Daily Traffic. So depending on how many vehicles are on the road, road diets may or may not make sense. So between 0 and 10,000 vehicles a day on your road, FHWA says this is an absolute great candidate, and they use the word "great," and that capacity most likely will not be effective. As you get higher, it's a good candidate, but do some analysis. All the way up to about 20,000, and then between 20 and 26,000, they're saying, "We have seen successful road diets," all the way up to 26,000 vehicles a day, but you really need to sharpen your pencils on those ones above 20,000. So Willetts, as I mentioned before, is about 8,000 vehicles a day, so it falls into the great candidate category for federal highways. Yes?
That 8,000 number, when was that taken?
So the 8,000, we have data from 2018, and then we have data again from, I forget the year, about, it was in the last few years. So we just have spot measurements for Willetts. We don't have continuous counters here.
Is there a certain time of the year that that was taken?
I'd have to look that up.
Or is that an average every year?
So the 8,000 was a peak summer day in 2018.
Okay.
So we've run a model, and so first off, the striping will not impact any street parking. We're not removing any street parking. The model was run for the whole corridor, and it showed no significant operational delays, and that all level, all intersections maintained an adequate level of service, which is a level of service of C or better.
What does that mean?
There's different relations of the level of service, and they look at different factors, including delay.
What is the level of service?
It's just a parameter, and it accounts for queuing and delay and some other factors.
Okay.
And then they give it a letter grade, A through, there's D and F, basically, so A. So anything that's ABC is considered good, and once you start getting below that, then basically the intersection is considered to start to break down.
Okay. Thank you.
So with the project installed, with the lane reduction, the corridor should maintain an adequate level of service. The biggest model impacts are at the intersection of Main Street and South, there at Safeway. So when we look there, we had a model from 2021, or we used 2021 volumes at that model, and it showed that the level of service northbound and southbound are C or better. This is with project. And the increase in delay at that intersection with the project as opposed to without the project is one second increase in the northbound, seven seconds in the southbound, and that would be for the peak hour. At the public meeting, the question was raised, "Why 2021? That was COVID. You should have used 2023 volumes." And what we really care about is the peak hour conditions in a busy summer day. So peak hour summer conditions on a busy summer day is not what we designed to. We designed to average conditions, but we reran the model, so we bumped up the volumes to 2023. We added 40% of volume on top of that, which is what we've measured in the past, our spot measurements on a peak summer day. And we reran the model, and the level of service at that intersection is still adequate, at C. at C. And the increase in the delays go to three seconds for northbound and 20 seconds for So these are still considered, again, within the level of service, they're considered adequate.
Could you explain, southbound meaning crossing from Main Street above the intersection to the south, or what does that mean exactly?
Yeah, so they modeled the whole corridor from the north, so the whole 101, so North Main Street down to South Main Street. So if you're, if you're trying to get to southbound from, right, you can add, at that intersection, if you want to get to South Main Street from that intersection, you might be waiting up to 20 seconds, longer with the project than without the project.
So across...
During peak hour. And that would be...
Okay, so you're trying to cross from the old part of the Main Street downtown to southbound, you're trying to cross the intersection to go beyond Safeway, to go south, that's definitely...
So from wherever you're coming, if you're trying to get on southbound Main Street at that intersection, you can experience up to a 20-second additional delay, yes?
When you say that intersection, and I guess what's confusing is North Main actually starts here at Commercial and Main, and that's South Main all the way till you get out of town.
Okay.
For us, they've been here forever. And so when you say that intersection, are you talking about the South Street and...
South Street intersection.
Okay, that's...
At Safeway.
All right.
It just, I'm sort of puzzled because it seems to me intuitively that there's more delay if you're trying to go north or turning left on Highway 20, if you're coming northbound, than there is if you're going southbound, but maybe a run, so...
I don't think you got that part, you were just saying 20 seconds.
I was just, peak hour, and so it's going to shift depending on which, are you talking about the morning peak or the evening peak, you know, traffic directions shift? So we were just considering the peak hour, and I didn't run the model. So if we want to get into the little details of the model, I'll have to get back to you. All right. So some future opportunities. There's been a lot of discussion about needing a new crosswalk at Walnut Street. We can't include that in this project because of the way the funding source is structured. We believe that a new crosswalk there would require some hardscaping in addition to striping and signage. So we will be investigating, and we can spin that off as a small standalone project. All of the other major improvements that were envisioned in the Willet's corridor plan, really the opportunity to have those discussions and see what we can do would be for this larger maintenance project that's going to be rolling through in about 10 years. So last week, we had a public meeting. It was attended by about a dozen people, and then we had about another half a dozen comments roll in afterwards. So generally, we had some supportive comments, the project will calm the traffic, enhance safety, respect the process that was used to develop the Willet's plan, and thank you for moving the project forward. We had a significant number of concerns expressed as well. One, short notice for the public meeting, to where the paper couldn't get the public notice out in time. And yes, we could have done a better job there, we could have done a better job. And this is a quick turnaround project, first time through, but that's not an excuse. We'll try better. Lane reductions will cause congestion, I've kind of addressed that, our modeling shows that it should be fine, there will be some enhanced delays at the Safeway intersection, but they're not considered significant, the level of service is adequate. We heard the comment that Main Street is for cars and not bikes. That doesn't jive with our mandate for contained streets, but that's the comment. Not enough cyclists to warrant a bike lane, so this was, I did not present the device of the data that we had at the public meeting, so we have seen back in 2015 that there were at least 37 bikes a day. And that was before, that's during congestion and other things. Difficult left-hand turns. With, if you remove the outside lane and have the bike lane and the buffer, it's much easier to cross one lane of traffic than it is two, and you have wider area for turning movements, it's just easier. So it should make turning movements easier. There were some concerns expressed about the southern Safeway driveway and turning out of that driveway. So the project will actually, currently that section north of the railroad tracks does not have a center turn lane, but this project will include a center turn lane in that area and also have just one lane of traffic that you have to cross. So the turning movements out of the Safeway driveway should be improved with this project. There were several modeling concerns. One, it was, did it account for commercial traffic? Yes, it did. We used about 12.5% of the total volume as commercial traffic. We got that number from our closest truck monitoring station out on Highway 101 nearby, so that's probably a conservative number. And did you account for speed limits? The model, models doesn't understand speed limits, it just models vehicles passing through and how they interact with each other. So overall, the project should slow traffic down somewhat, and eventually speed limits will be adjusted to how fast drivers drive. Is there a way to slow down southbound traffic turning onto Manor Street? So we stop at the north, this project stops at the northern end of Manor Street. It will, with striping and the bike lane, it will narrow the visible lane, which should help slow down traffic somewhat, but it's not intended to address that intersection And then apparently there was a similar project in Lucerne, and there was concern that there is no passing opportunity. So this is a traffic calming, and like, one of the things we heard repeatedly at the public meeting was aggressive driving, people jogging from positions, speeding and passing even in the turning lanes. So by having a project that's going to induce some traffic calming, hopefully that'll reduce that type of aggressive behavior. I think another thing that was, is a misunderstanding is, people think that this is a bike lane project. This is not a bike lane project. This is a project, it's a safety project. If you go back to the numbers I presented, 91 of the parties involved in collisions are motor vehicles. They are going to be the primary beneficiaries of this safety project. Bicyclists will also get a lane to ride in, but that bicycle lane has multiple benefits, including for drivers and for pedestrians, so it'll be less lanes of traffic to cross and things like that. So this is a project that benefits all road users. It's not a bike project. All right. So this project implements the vision that Willet's has told us that they would like to create. That vision was created with extensive public engagement. This is a safety-first project that benefits all road users. We prioritize this project using this new funding source because of the effort, because of the public engagement that went into this plan, so that we could just take it off right out of your plan and put it down on the ground with very rapid turnaround requirements that we have with this project. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does counsel have any clarifying questions before I open the public hearing? Matt?
I just wanted to clarify that is the two lanes and bike lane right from the intersection at Safeway immediately, in other words, there won't be two-lane southbound at the very, on this side of that intersection, which there are now, there's two lanes of southbound coming into that intersection...
Yes.
Two lanes afterwards.
So the...
Those are going to go away?
The project will start at the intersection of Oak Street and extend all the way down to Manor. And so we go one block north of the state highway to conform to the existing road striping and bike lanes that are north of Oak Street. So it'll be, basically, the project extends what was done on North Main, south of Oak Street, down to Manor.
So it'll be one lane in each direction?
There'll be one lane in each direction all the way through town with a contiguous bike lane all the way through town.
Thank you. Any other questions from counsel? Okay, I'm going to open this up to the public. I know we have lots of comments, so first come, first served. I'm going to ask people to come to the podium, state your name for the record, and let's go for it. Who wants to be first? Mr. Alameda, and then you. And just to let you know, you will have three minutes, and Dolores will keep in track here.
My name's John Alameda, lifelong resident of this city, worked for DOT for 21 years. You're going to lose everything you gained with the bypass by doing this. Your lane might be backed up a quarter mile right now, it'll be backed up a half mile, and it's northbound, it has the problem, it's not southbound. It's always been northbound Safeway. The other thing is, when you drop this down to a single lane in each way, which worked great for the city of Ukiah, but they don't have a state highway going through there. You've got a state highway going through here with a lot of truck traffic going to the coast, a lot of tourists going to the coast. What's going to happen is, when people want to commute to Ukiah, because this is a bedroom community now, to work down there, and they all want to stop off at McDonald's, and somebody's walking in the driveway there on the sidewalk, they're going to block everybody back, and it's going to promote a problem going backwards. He just talked about you lost half of your traffic by the bypass, but you've gained, you lost half your lane miles in the traveled four-lane streets in Willet's, so that backs it all the way up. If you want to try this for an experiment, try it from Holly Street to Safeway, and you're going to find out within a few years, or within the first year, that it's a big mistake. Because you're going to back traffic up from the Highway 20 intersection to the Holly Street stoplights, that's what's going to happen. The other thing is, you've got several businesses that turn off. I compare these four lanes to the four lanes you have in Airport Boulevard. You didn't see the city of Ukiah put a road diet on Airport Boulevard where they got Walmart, Costco, Les Swab, whatever. We got a lot of businesses at the south end. So you look at your tax rate, and that'll tell you how much business you got. And the businesses here that put in the biggest amount of taxes are going to be on the south end of town, and that's where the congestion is. That's where the congestion's going to be when you're trying to turn off and go in there. One lane in each direction, first person that turns off and can't get turned into the driveway blocks everybody. Right now, you've got six people trying to get into McDonald's in the morning, you go to the left lane, you get by them, you move on. It's going to cause road rage, it's going to cause problems. If you want to try it, start at Holly Street, go north, you'll figure it out from there. Thank you.
Don't forget to state your name for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Phyllis Aguilera, and I've only been in Willet's for about seven years, so I'm still learning a lot about the city and the history and from, you know, having been a new timer. But I have some questions about the project, and unfortunately, I missed the public meetings whenever they were, I don't know. I don't know how communication was distributed for all of us to be able to attend. I'm still learning how the communication from the city works, other than getting on the website, I guess, I don't know if, you know, however things get dissimulated to the residents. But anyway, a couple of my questions that came to my mind when I was listening to the presentation, and I couldn't really hear him too clearly, so I might probably missed it, because he started out talking loud, then his voice went lower, lower, lower. So, but it was kind of interesting to me that it sounds like, if I heard right, that this original project was, began in 2016? And so I kind of got confused, you know, I think I kind of got the gist of why, of the different projects and the money involved in it, but I couldn't really figure out why it took so long to get to this point. I mean, what's the delay for a project that takes so long? I know the government has a lot to do with it, because there's a lot of bureaucracy, so that might be it, but that's my opinion. Anyway, so I was, that kind of confused me, and then also, I didn't quite understand why, when he presented the three models, why it sounded like we didn't really get, or maybe it already was decided, that the city of Willet's would accept his quick turn, because it's like, if he has future alternatives, then we're going to, supposedly, the money's going to be 1.7 million dollars, and then, what, then later on, however many more years down the road, there's going to be more money spent? I don't understand the money part of it, because it doesn't, it sounds to me like we start with this much, and then as time goes, whatever the timeframe is, then there's these other things they want to do. So isn't that going to cost the city more money in the long run? Seems to me like the decision should be made for the final project of what, how they want, how the city wants to look to accommodate everybody that is on the road. So that was kind of confusing to me. And his data, again, to me, yeah, I understand they upgraded it to the, after the 20, to 2023, but again, regarding the accidents, he didn't explain what timeframe, again, like I said, I'm sorry if I missed all this because I was way in the back.
Your three minutes are up.
Oh, okay. But anyway, those are kind of my concern, you know, the money, and I never heard where the money's going to be come from, coming from. Is it going to be taxed to us? Question mark.
Thank you. And just to clarify, that funding is a Caltrans stream that they've identified, it is not an additional tax to be levied, and it is not coming from the city's general fund, it's being paid for, the proposal would be, as presented, would be paid for by Caltrans. Sir?
And if I could just add that after the council meeting is over, you can reach out to any of us on the website, there's our phone numbers and our emails, or just grab us after the end of the meeting, and if you have additional questions, I'm sure any of us here would be happy to chat with you.
My name's Mike Order, in this town for a long time. I was opponent to what they did downtown for a few reasons, because we're, went back in history, because it used to be the way it was, and then they upgraded, we put a turn lane in. Then they committed, took the turn lane out, and now people turn around cars into bike lanes, many times. Seen people walk across the crosswalk, almost get hit because somebody just parked to turn into a bank, and somebody takes it right, right in the park lane. Just like John said, that's going to happen if you do it out there. People are going to start passing on the right and run into people. 91 wrecks up there on north, I was on the fire department 17 years. Most of the wrecks I went to were rear enders, somebody speeding. They weren't head-ons, they weren't any of this, we don't waste the time. We used to have the turn lane in front of Safeway. What would happen? Right there at the north end of the railroad tracks, we'd have a quarter mile, half mile of traffic congestion, because people wait to go to one lane. You're going to do this, all you're going to do is move it out the other end of town. What happens on holiday weekends, when you have everybody coming through town to go to Fort Bragg? We're going to have cars backed up all the way to the freeway on the off-road. I mean, all these, not in 37 bikes, that's cute, but, but things like this, I mean, the roads are for cars, supposed to make safest passes for cars. People are on bikes. I rode a bike to school for years in this town. No bike lanes in, and we all made it. So, I mean, you can uh-huh me all you want, and be rude as you want, but I'm telling you, there is no bike racks at any school anymore. No kids ride bikes. So you could go, less than 1% of the people in this town own a bike. 99.5% own cars. But screwing up the other end of town like you did downtown, and this was supposed to be temporary too, if you remember, when I was here on that, because the fire chief was here and I was here, and we drove fire trucks through this town, and it was going to be a cluster, which I was told it was, because I don't drive them anymore. But you, when you start doing that at the other team, and people have to turn to the right, the same thing here, I've seen trucks scoot through town, and it's a cluster, I'm glad I'm not driving those bigger, and they get bigger all the time. So this makes no sense, and you can repave, you can repaint, but don't... So this makes no sense, and you can repave, you can repaint, but don't screw it up.
Hey Mike, can I just say something real quick? Greta's sick. You might have missed her when you came in, she wasn't, she's catching her breath.
She's sick and rude.
No, she's...
Oh, I'm sorry, I had a throat tickle. Who else would like to make a comment?
Good evening, Andrew Hosford. I respect the process. I know that a lot of time and effort and work went into the planning with the city and collaboration with Caltrans, so, and there was a lot of public comment back in 2016 and 2017. I think we've learned a lot since then. There's been a lot of changes in Willets, surprisingly, changes in Willets, right? There's been a lot of different, or there's a lot of differences now than there was when we started this. Well, the first thing there is, we have, we can learn from what we like and what we don't like about the downtown relinquishment project, or whatever it's called. Have we surveyed the public on how that's affected them, or what we think, how effective that has been, and what are the wins and what are the losses? The other conversation we had is the Rails and Trails project that's coming through town, and we want to encourage biking through town. There may be other options now, rather than just being on Main Street. I don't want to pull biking away from Main Street, because that can be a commercial use, too. A bike is a vehicle. I use one to go get my lunch at Pizza to Go when I want, not get in my truck and that type of thing, but, so I don't want to disregard the bikes in here, but, you know, I just wish that there, and I understand the haste to get the money spent, because it's kind of a user-to-lose type of situation. I just do have concerns about going from one, or from two lanes in either direction down to one. I agree with the previous speakers about how much it's going to slow downtown. My main concern and question at the town meeting was regarding the delays, now it's three seconds and 20-second delays. That's one intersection at one kind of steady-state kind of situation, peak traffic or whatever. My concern would be the delays of transiting through the entire, the entire section of roadway, from, say, the south of the railroad tracks, all the way through the commercial side of Willets to exit town, south of town. So I think that that would be substantially more than that. I do think that there would be congestion, that type of thing. I also, like I said, to start this, I respect the process, and so I understand, like, it may be too late at this point, and maybe this is going to happen anyway, but I'm just, hopefully, if we do do this, we can do some studies in the short-term years from now, and try to develop something that's more beneficial to the, to the community on that next kind of section, if there is one, for that overall improvement. So I don't want to disregard the bike lanes, but I also don't want to lose two lanes of traffic or the center median, so I don't know how you guys accommodate all of that without losing more land, so, thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm John Kavaznikah, and I'm wondering, first off, is there a choice? Do we have a choice not to do it, or is Caltrans just going to do it? That's a question.
As far as I understand, this is a proposal.
Okay.
They're taking in comment, not only from us and you guys, also as part of this.
So the citizens can say, no, we don't want this, and it won't happen? Is that possible?
It is Highway 20, which is owned by Caltrans.
I mean, it's a question, I'm just wondering if we have a choice. Is it going to happen, if we want it to happen or not to happen?
Would you like me to answer the question?
Go ahead.
The project is here to implement the vision as stated by the city of Willets of what they would like in this section of roadway.
So we have a choice?
No. No, and it said the city of Willets wants this. So if the city of Willets informs us in writing that they no longer, that they are going back on their plan, that they no longer support the corridor enhancement plan and the elements of the safety plan, we prefer not to see that project put in place. We'll give it serious consideration.
Thank you.
So it's a consideration. It wouldn't be like, you're not doing it. The city says, no, we're not doing it. Okay, that's clear. But I'm a board member on the Chamber of Commerce in Willets, and one of the biggest concerns of business owners on the south end of town is traffic and public safety, and how do you access their business, and how do you turn left, you know, how do you turn right? And that's a big concern for business owners on the south end of town. How do we calm traffic down so people can safely cross the street back and forth? Now, I don't know about reducing it down to two lanes, I don't know if that's the answer, but I know there has to be something that happens down there, because people can't shop, you can't support businesses down there, because it's just not safe, you know? It's hard for people to turn, there's no crosswalks, you know? It's a challenge. But I don't really like the idea of two lanes, but I don't have the answer. But I know there's real serious concerns about business owners down there. That's one of their biggest complaints, is people going too fast, people can't access their businesses, they can't shop, they can't walk down one side of the street, they have to walk a half a mile to get to the first crosswalk, you know? I mean, it's a real problem down there, to have a business.
That part won't change with this.
No crosswalks. And you know, Caltrans doesn't exactly have the best track record about doing what they say either. I mean, look what they did to our downtown. They really, oh, I'm sorry.
Can I ask John a question?
Yes.
John, are you here as a chamber representative today, and I have a question for you. Did you have a chance to poll your members? I know that, and again, I'm not criticizing you at the moment, Mr. Kraus, it's just, it felt kind of rushed to us, too, and so my question to you is, do you have a chance to poll membership at all, or get an idea of what they want? Because the original project that we proposed, and it was before I got on the council, but the idea was that it would have the streetscape that Caltrans talked about that this project doesn't include, and so the idea was that it would slow vehicles down and do that, but this doesn't include that, and so my question is, and the original project, I think, called for some of the crosswalks and things, so have you had a chance to poll your membership?
Poll the membership?
Yeah.
Yes, we have, we have talked to membership a lot, and that's how I come up to this conclusion, is that they want traffic calming measures. I've never heard anybody say two lanes, but yeah, it's a, it's a problem for businesses down there. Does that answer your question?
I guess, I was just wondering if you had this proposal.
We've had, we've had these discussions. When we had our little meeting.
Oh, no, my question was, had this proposal that's being proposed now, had you guys had a chance to bat this around?
You know, honestly, this is the first I've heard of it, of this proposal. I've missed...
It was a Friday a week ago.
Somehow I've missed, and we're informed, and we haven't heard anything about it.
Well, I know we did have a chamber representative at the meeting, so that's why I was...
Susan was here.
And just so you know, the council just heard about this two weeks ago. This was the first time we heard about it, was at the last council meeting, we had got a fly-in from Caltrans.
That this meeting was happening, not that, you know, the original plan had been out there, you know, there was public comment and all that, but as far as the, this coming to us, it was at the last council meeting that we heard there was going to be a meeting, and so that's why. Again, I just wanted to clarify that whether you guys had a chance to poll your membership about it.
Yeah, yes, we have talked about traffic calming measures.
But not this project?
Not this project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the extra time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Again, Larry Aguilera, like my wife's just been here several, seven years, and I always take a left turn on 20, when I'm out of town, so at Safeway, take the left right there. And sometimes it takes me two turn signal lights to make that left, because of all the traffic, and that's beautiful, because one lane is for going straight, and the other lane is for making left, left turns. And now, what we're proposing is to put one lane there, and probably put a little cutoff to make the left turn, but if you get a diesel truck or one of these lumber trucks there, you're going to get a bigger backup on both sides to make that left turn. So 20 seconds addition doesn't seem logical, if I'm already waiting there for two, two lights to turn, so it's going to be quite a bit longer, and not to mention, it's going to back up and back up Safeway, so they can't get out of Safeway. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, I'm Lucy. I work for the Blue Zones Project as a public policy advocate, and I have also lived and, lived in and loved Willets for over 10 years now. And I, I first want to just bring up a workshop that we held about a month ago, where 40 very active, happy participants, the evaluations were resoundingly positive, learned about complete streets principles and practices, and I was really taken aback by the amount of passion and enthusiasm there was within this community for complete streets principles applied in our streets. So I just want to remind folks of that, and then also remind folks of the input on Commercial Street and the Great Redwood Trail, and all of these other places where there are avid supporters of walkability and bikability within Willets, that I think is not necessarily reflected in the thin section of tonight, so I just want to amplify those voices for a second. Setting that aside, the passion I've seen, you know, as, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Andreas.
Andreas, thank you. As Andreas mentioned in his presentation, there is a mandate from the state to reflect complete streets principles in all new roadwork. So, you know, there's that, but also, your city planner, Taylor Perry, who's over there, compiled this, like, oh my gosh, the work was amazing. She compiled this distillation of the last 30 years' worth of policies that the city of Willets has relating to pedestrian access and walkability, and I believe that this project, I won't even say I believe this, this project is a reflection of the policies that the city of Willets has committed to over the past 30 years, and the commitments that you all have made to the future of Willets. So setting that aside, I just want to mention also that as an individual who lives and walks and bikes in Willets, one of the reasons why I chose to settle here is because I love the small-town familial rural spirit of this community, and as I'm driving down this exact corridor that we're talking about, I so often am seeing kids, teens, families, bikers, folks cruising down the street right there, and I have wondered about their safety as folks pass by in their cars. In, I think it was 2019, maybe 18, by chance, my sister and I happened to witness a fatal collision there, and it still haunts me, I can see the man pinned behind this SUV against a light post, so it is a dangerous part of town. Furthermore, with the economic pressure after cannabis legalization, the bypass, and pandemic, increasing visibility along this roadway simply by slowing cars will increase folks stopping into businesses that they probably don't see, because they go too fast. I have other things, but I don't say that.
Thank you, Lucy.
Mark Walker, once again. One of my major concerns are, is starting at where, what used to be the old Pepperwood Motel across from the old car wash, there's a truck that offloads right there to what the housing there, it used to be the old folks home, Hathaway owned it, and they deliver goods there, but they take up, they turn their blinkers on and stop there. Go up to the turn lane by Mariposa, there's one stop there offloading. Go down by McDonald's, there's one block in the middle of lanes with blinkers on offloading. Do we have a permitting policy in order for them to be able to do that, or do they need a ticket? Because that would be revenue, and if not, figure it out, okay? Because, I mean, I go to Ukiah for appointments, okay, and I leave early in the morning, I get right there in that right lane, and want to go past McDonald's, okay, and somebody wants to turn to McDonald's, buy three cars, blinkers on. I'm fine with that, but as soon as I want to get over, I'm trapped. There's cars flying by me, won't let me out. So it sounds to me more like we have an issue of having a speed limit, and no one's enforced. You ever drove in San Francisco? That'll solve the problem, because down there, none of them pay attention. That's what the issue is. Start slowing people down, and get them to do what they're supposed to do, and see how it works out, and then just gauge it from there. But I would definitely say do something about the truck. You start squeezing it down, where are they going to park? They're going to have to figure it out, they'll lock us up.
All right, does anybody else have a comment they'd like to make? Oh, go ahead, don't call.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. Rod Wilburn, Willets resident since most of my life, since 1972, let's put it out there. Just wanted to give a little more context to the process, because I think some of it's got lost, and while I respect everybody's opinion, everybody has the right to speak out, as the last, as the woman who spoke, I can't remember her name, she talked about all the previous studies done by the city, and all of the things that are on the shelf collecting dust. This process started, it was in 2014, former city manager Adrian Moore, and I, and I believe, I can't recall who else it was, we started meeting with Main Street merchants, and then we talked about, I think it was Tom Mann and Pete Swan had some drawings for downtown, and that morphed into getting a grant to do this Main Street corridor enhancement project, and I would say thousands of hours, hundreds of meetings, sat in this room with 30 to 40 people, talking about different ways to improve the plans. As a part of that grant, improve downtown, improve Main Street, part of that grant, the city hired WRT, Fair and Peers, GHD, traffic engineers, engineers, but traffic planners looked at different options for town, and that two-lane down south of the Highway 20 turnoff, that's what came out of it. So I, those people don't usually show up at these meetings, because they think they've already done their job, they think they've already participated. I think the article I saw said there were over 250 people that participated in that process. So I think, and it's identified in the plan, early phases, a low-cost solution, which is striping, and striping can easily be undone. Rather than go to the full project, where you're talking about putting in hardscape, medians don't come out very easy, and it's costly. And you're not going to put a roundabout around this corner and take that out, so there's, it's probably a 10, 15 million dollar project to do the entire south of town. I think if you were to walk away from this plan, after all that's been put into it, you'd basically devalue the plan. Caltrans funded that plan, taxpayers funded that plan. You know, Caltrans was the avenue of funding, so out of respect for the process, and out of respect for the people that participated, I think this is a good project for the city. I think it improves south, the south end of town, it goes from a four-lane highway, it's wider than a four-lane highway, has more pavement than a four-lane highway, so I just would say again, thank you for, I did not ever think this plan would come to this point this fast.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Maureen Johnson, originally Maureen Moore, did get married. I've lived here my whole life. I live out on Locust Street, so I spend a lot of time on the south end of town, going left, right, and every which way. I was thrilled when the Burger King stoplight went in, because I learned to drive, cut and left out of Holly Street to head north. We have made so many grand improvements, including underneath the arch, that would be a total bummer to revert back to how it was. The bottleneck was such a nightmare. There's traffic in town, people are driving. Willets is a long, skinny city, is, I think, Willets is a long, skinny city, as I think Susan pointed out at the previous public meeting. There's no other way around. Like, if you wanna get from, you know, Brown's Corner, past Safeway, you have to go there, whether you're a resident, a commuter, a traveler, business. We need to retain use of the streets. You know, it's, I think it's really, really, really important. I, I have a job at the newspaper, I tried to help get the word out about the previous meeting, so that we could try and get public's input. Tried to do the same for this, to let folks know. I mean, there's nothing worse, I think, than people complaining that don't show up. So I appreciate everyone coming here and trying to really put, you know, some good work in. A few slides into the presentation, I feel like maybe there is a solution. What if we just look at taking this money that's already allocated for projects, and don't do the road reduction, but do improved signage, re-stripe, make blinky sidewalks, you know, or, I'm sorry, crossings, you know, make the street signs bigger? I don't know if you can get back to that slide, but all of those things that didn't include reducing the lanes down from four to two seem like a great idea. Like, let's start there, and see if that helps. There's money available, can we, like, cross out some of it and keep the other part? Is that, like, is that possible? Because that seems like that, let's Caltrans keep us in their good spirits, or whatever, that gives us some traffic measures, and that doesn't impede the flow of functioning traffic, but might offer people the chance to do the right thing and behave better, be more aware and visible at crosswalks. You know, let's put, let's put more crosswalks in. Can you just change the stripes from this way to this way? And then, you know, look at it a little differently? I mean, I'm all for pedestrian safety, and bikers, I mean, whatever. But I think, you know, getting more north and south options, and then you could do whatever you want, I realize that's not part of this funding available source, but why not we do an interim step? Let's, let's make better signage, let's make brighter crosswalks, let's make more obnoxious stop signs, slow signs, whatever. That one on Central's great, with the LED band around it, it's very obvious. You know, let's do that for a lot of signs, and then see where it goes. I don't like the hurried decision making, so I think it's important to look at it a little more.
Thank you, Maureen. Yes, please.
So I'm Amy Groomes, and I would love to see more data, and I'm a school teacher, something all about data, to make sure that academics, what's my plan, putting forward for academics, fits the survey. So I think there's not enough surveys at the right times and the right months, and I remember when we met at the firehouse, one of the, I think there was one, like, date on a Wednesday, on the twenty, 2021, which was, like, depends on what month that is, because I think we weren't back to moving anywhere and going back to school until March thirteenth of 2021, I believe, maybe I have my dates wrong. So I just don't think the data fits what our traffic is, and what our congestion is, and the movement of how many people, just like what other people have said here, how many cars are off the road to go to Highway 20. And if we could look back at the accident record from when we were a turn lane like we want to do in the plan, how you're turning in and out of Safeway from both directions, that was what it was before. And I don't know what year that was, but it changed due to traffic collisions, I believe. And we started end traffic backup due to the bypass. So a lot has changed since 2016, or even 2014 to now, mainly 2000, I don't know when the bypass went in, I can't remember, like, sixteen, seventeen? I don't know. So there's a lot of change compared to when you met to make these decisions on what we should do with our town. But that would be a nightmare, having people being able to turn in both directions into Safeway, or just having a turn lane only going two hundred feet, I think two fifty, two hundred fifty feet is legally where you can turn, two fifty or two hundred, where you couldn't ride down that center lane the whole time to get out of the lane. It's just, we're going backwards, we're not going forwards, and we have actually a higher enrollment in school. And yes, we need more housing, we've talked about that. So if we get more housing, that means more people. Enrollment has gone up tremendously in the Willets district. Don't know if they're living through a charter or what, but we do have some new teachers moving to town. Ten, seven, ten people moving to town to work. So we're going backwards with this plan, and I think we really need to think about what, if it's safety, let's not decrease our roads and make them smaller, and put pedestrians way over there behind the, I mean, the bike lane, they're further out anyways, because we're not gonna do the bowl outs like downtown Ukiah. But we just really need, if we need more signage and brighter, not sidewalks, but crosswalks, and if that's the issue, and add bike lanes, move some property lines back, can add some bike lanes, four-lane, slow them down somehow, police officers sitting really makes traffic stop. So we need to think about it more before we just do this, and it's gonna cost our taxpayers a lot of money that's wasted.
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Mike Adams. Couple comments on reflection of this, and not in any order here, but $1.7 million to paint a mile of road seems kind of like a lot, and the idea of undo it and redo it, that would be like, what, another $1.7 million? That seems like a lot. That's more, that's almost more expensive than building the bypass for the, for the same amount of road, for, for the one mile that this would be. We didn't spend $1.7 per mile. There was this slide up where you put that was eight thousand cars a day is now what's going through, but it listed that it was at Sherwood Road, which is on, actually on North Main Street. So I don't know if that data is relevant or accurate to what we're talking about, but this is all south of Main Street, and Sherwood Road is north of Main Street. One bike accident, three pedestrian accidents in five or six years is, I mean, obviously we want none, but that's not much to reduce, and calling it not a, a bike project, I mean, to me, this just seems like exactly, I think it's a bike project. Getting rid of two lanes of cars for two lanes of bikes seems like a bike project, but it's also a safety project, so it could be two things, but it's definitely high on the bike project thing. The stat, though, the number that said that northbound traffic would be reduced or be backed up by three seconds, I think, I don't think anybody in this room agrees with, like, at all. That's flawed data. But I do wanna acknowledge that it sounds like, and what another gentleman said, the process that happened that got us to here now was a lot of meetings and a lot of talking to get to here, and it sounds like what Caltrans did was listen to that, which is great, because this is the information that was presented, so. But in that time, I and probably others, really, I appreciate that there's two lanes going north to turn left onto Highway 20, and if we reduce that down to one, that is gonna be a backup of significantly more than three seconds. And of what we're, biggest concern seems to be safety and speed going on that south Main Street, like, the Miracle Mile section, is, is like, you know, a few people getting tickets here and there would probably, like, you know, spread the word that, like, slow down because you'll get a ticket. And if that's what our goal is, one, it would generate revenue for the city, and, two, it'd actually probably slow down traffic, you know, I mean, okay, they're my, they're my thoughts. But I do, I do appreciate that, you know, that, that.
This is our chance to let Caltrans hear from us.
So he made perfect sense. What I was hearing from him is we need a current count down here by the Chevron, right there by the Safeway, because how many trucks and cars are headed to the coast? They don't come out north to go to the coast. So is that an accurate number? That's my concern.
Right. Anybody else? Kapila.
My name's Kapila Phoenix, and I don't have an opinion either way, but I do have questions. And I don't know if you're able to address them. How do the speed limits get set? Is that something that can get answered?
I'd say I could answer that, yes.
Yes, please.
Do you want me to mic them?
Yes, please.
So the way speed limits can set essentially is by how fast drivers drive. So what Caltrans does, we do not set the speed limit, we measure how fast the drivers drive. We take the eighty-fifth percentile of those traffic speeds, which is knocking out some of the real crazies, and that is what is used to set the speed limit, per California Vehicle Code law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could add, one thing with that is that that's influenced by roadway design or how the road is shaped. So obviously, going up two-lane Sherwood Road versus four-lane Willets, or two-lane Willets would eventually change that, so.
And then another question would be, with the bike lane, will every intersection have dashed bike lane lines so that a car can then make that turn? Is that a hundred feet where a bike lane goes from solid to dashed to allow turns? Is that accurate?
Every driveway? Every driveway, is what you're asking?
Not, no, I'm asking intersections, not driveways.
Okay.
Will we be keeping, or is it in the plan to keep that flashing light at the crosswalk at McDonald's? Do we know? That would be a concern, that we can keep that, because that, I think, has helped with accidents. I think that's all the questions.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions from the public, or pull this back up to the dice?
Not the public, but I wanted to clarify when we met that this project includes a surface treatment and some area treatments called layouts to the road as well, so there is more to the 1.6 million.
Olivia, I'm sorry, you need the microphone for the, and if you could identify yourself, not everyone from the public knows you yet.
Hi, I'm Olivia Grup, the Services and Facilities Director for the City of Willets. From my understanding of the plan, which maybe we can have clarified, there is more to the project than simply painting stripes. There's a surface treatment, microsurface, and some digouts that will improve some areas that need attention on the road also. Did you wanna clarify that that is, from my opinion, probably more of the cost?
Yeah, that's accurate. Obviously, that's, that's accurate.
That would be the majority of the cost, not the striping itself, the surface treatment.
Yeah. And sorry, I don't mean to, you don't mean to be sticklers about coming to the microphone, but the camera for TV land needs to be able to hear everyone. Thank you, so that's why we have you come up here.
Yeah, I was just gonna add, my name's Karen Kurnan, by the way. So part of the cost, there's a lot that goes into the project besides just striping. Traffic control is one of the biggest elements, actually. So, and, you know, we do construction site BMPs, there's a lot of other components to the project besides just striping. But yeah, the signs, the microsurface treatment and digouts is by far, yeah, one of the biggest items. So thank you.
Thank you.
I need one more comment.
Mr. Alameda, one more, and then Mr. Walker, one more. And I think that it looks like everyone who has wanted to speak has had a chance.
One of the things I don't think the city has thought about, and they ought to, especially the school district. When I was a kid, the police department would come to the schools, and they would train people, kids, so as they grew up, they would know the proper side of the road to walk on, and the proper side of the road to ride a bicycle on. When I go through town now, I don't see very many people riding bikes, but the ones I do see, they're going down the sidewalks, or they'll dart out across all the lanes. And they need to be sighted, and there need to be police officers going to the schools and teaching these kids. I remember, a distinct thing I remember from a police officer coming to school, they took a car, a patrol car, and they jumped on the fuel and they got down, whoever knows? When you're a little kid, you think it's a big area. Then he jumps on the brakes and he skids. He gets out and he tells everybody, how, how fast you think you were doing? Oh, some of the kids said, oh, sixty miles an hour, you know? He was doing twenty-five miles an hour. That always stuck with me, how far he skidded that car at twenty-five miles an hour. People need to know, and some of these people are middle-aged, they're running down the sidewalks on a bicycle. That doesn't make people like me feel like enhancing bicycle lanes for people who won't obey traffic laws on bicycles. So that needs to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walker.
So, sitting here thinking about all this, and what everybody's talking about, my concern is the fact that the state of California recognizes recreational marijuana use. Okay, when I went to school, you had a driver's ed class, you used to have the little buggies, you gotta sit in the screen right there and everything. And they'd show you pictures of all these horrible wrecks of people on alcohol, mangled and all that. And then later in life, I got schooled in saying that if you smoke marijuana, your reaction time slowed. So, and that kind of blew me out of the water there, because the state of California said, okay, it's okay to do this, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna set up any regulation to make sure. So it's like an open can, you're waiting for somebody to get hit that's been smoking dope. And, because they're not in the game, they're out there somewhere else. And all of a sudden, a kid darts out, I mean, every car I see, ladies and gentlemen, cars go down the road, the windows are blacked out, so what can they see? So you can't see them, can they see you? That's a major concern, it's all about safety. We wanna protect the public. And I'd agree about the speed limits being enforced, or hitting people in the pocket, but I'm not gonna give them.
Thank you very much.
What's the deadline that the city needs to be able to effect change?
Can you answer that, sir?
We need to be submitting the project designs by the end of September, and we need to have a contract. We need, the bid package needs to go out by December, and if that doesn't happen, the money is lost. So what we have time for is if there are minor changes to the plans, such as some of the concerns around Safeway, we can take another look at that, we can possibly make some modifications to the plan set. Major modifications in completely changing the spirit of the plan altogether, I think we're past that window.
Thank you. Okay. Has everyone had a chance to feel heard? Everyone who's here. Okay, so I wanna thank you, I know this is a long process, I know sometimes folks think it's going on too long, people are saying the same things over, but this is a very important issue for our community, and if anybody spends any time looking at the Willets fan page and Willets community page, they will see that there are literally hundreds of Willets residents who have weighed in on this proposal, and have very strong feelings on both sides of the issue, on all sides of the issue, and lots of questions. So I really appreciate everyone who showed up tonight and asked questions and gave their opinions. I think it's really important for the planning process and for the designers to hear the concerns of the community members who will actually use this road and, and drive it on a daily basis. So I thank everyone for their participation, and I thank you for both being here and listening. I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back up to the dice, and I will open it up for council to comment, ask questions, do your thing. Has anyone got anything that they would like to ask or say?
Go ahead, I'll let you go first.
Go ahead, I'll let you go first.
Yeah. This is another one of those where there's strong reasons for and against, and where, you know, it puts me personally, and I get very ambivalent, because I agree with all the different sides that get expressed. One of the questions I had was about the difference of the delays that were being projected for southbound and northbound, and feeling like that was really not reflective of the reality that we all experience going northbound and, you know, with the turn lane for those who are wanting to go left to Highway 20 versus southbound with two lanes going to two lanes starting at Oak Street. And so I'm, the data don't seem to be, to match up with my experience or with the reality of those delays and backup. We do continue, even after the bypass, to have a very law of backing up of people northbound trying to get either through town or turn left at Highway 20. And if this exacerbates that, I would want to know that before we do it, because that's already a big backup problem in town. I don't personally see there a whole lot of problems southbound, and I do that a lot. But anyway, so those are among my concerns. And then I really was hearing the whole thing about, from the point of view of the businesses in this Miracle Mile section of town, is this project gonna help them or hurt them? And slowing people down, calming the traffic, seems like a really good idea, but if we aren't, you know, if the speed limit's gonna reflect how fast people go and they're used to going fast, and they've got two lanes to go fast in instead of four lanes to go fast in, it may not actually accomplish a whole lot. And a lot of those people need to be able to turn into the businesses on either side of the street. So, I mean, I guess I really resonated with a lot of the people that said, "I don't think we have enough data. This is happening really fast, and we didn't even know about it until two weeks ago." It didn't come out in time to get into last week's Willets Weekly before the public forum that you held, so this is the first time a lot of people are hearing about it. I guess I would just come down on the side of, let's answer some of these questions in the next few weeks so that we, the city, can advise Caltrans what things we think are good or not quite good enough about this plan before it is finalized. But on the schedule that Caltrans is talking about, we do have one more month. So I guess that's where I'm at with it at the moment. I'd like to hear from other people.
Karen's next.
Well, I guess I'm kind of torn, kind of like Madge. I honestly feel a little rushed, and again, thank you very much for bringing a project. I honestly wish you'd called me six months ago, "Hey, we're hatching this plan to do this, to bring your plan that you had." I honestly, back in 2016, I wasn't even on the council, and I put my input in on a couple things that were, that I agreed with and disagreed with on the Main Street plan. And so there were some things that I had some doubts about that didn't happen, and there's some things that happened, and, because I knew as a police officer all those years that people are gonna do certain things whether you do that. I mean, a good example would be the, I'm not sure what you call them, there's some striping there at Highway 20 and Coast Street that they put in, and the idea is it's supposed to be an imaginary island, because, again, we're striping and not putting down barriers. And I always try to slow down and not drive over the island, because it'd be safer to drive over the island. And a couple times, people just race up or honk at me, and so I'll slow down and put my intersect, you know, and put my blinker on, and I'll start to turn, to turn from 20 on there, and sometimes I look back, and a couple times I've had to gun it to do that. I, I'm torn, because the plan we envisioned, and I do think that if you do this, it will slow traffic down, and I don't think it's about bicycles. And for people that say, "Make the bicycles down, go down the other path," I'll tell you what, you ride a bike to go where you want to go, not to drive on the, not to ride on the trail. I mean, if my goal is to ride on the trail, I'll ride on the trail, but if I were gonna ride my bike to the south end, and I do walk the downtown currently, even the south end. Sometimes I'll drop my car off to get work done, and I'll walk back from there to my house. One day, they actually surprised me and called me like an hour later, and I had to truck back over right away, so I was a little tired that day. But I guess where I'm getting with this is that I felt like I just, I want, like Madge, I kind of really want to pull more of the businesses down. That's why I was asking chamber folks, there, are there any of the other businesses there? Do you feel strongly if we slow traffic down? Because ultimately, if I had enough businesses down there telling me, "We think that this will slow it down and we can get some more business in, or it'll help us out," then, and I, again, apologize, because we heard about it, then I had a trip to leave town, so I had less time to go around knocking on doors, so I've only talked to a couple folks. But I'd be real interested in what the businesses say, because I'll tell you, it's not about the bicycles, it's about slowing people down. And if we slow them down, then that. Also, I was an opponent of the current striping, because I didn't think it was gonna fix things. It actually fixed some things, and some things are about the same there at Safeway, because originally you had those delineators in there, and so, and that was to keep people from driving down that central left turn lane from way down when traffic was backed up. And it is 250 feet, because we used to sit there when I was chief, and we'd, we literally, we'd go out, we'd park cops down at the south end, and we actually had measured out where the 250 mark was, and honestly, one day, we stopped, and I won't go on to who we stopped, but we stopped a lot of people, and we would do these, I call them stings, just to kind of get the word out. And I'll be honest with you, for those that say, "Put a cop there," we just don't have the cops to put out there 24/7. It's just not gonna happen. It's never been a situation, you can put them out every once in a while and stuff like that. So I am, I'm a little torn, because I would like to slow traffic down, but at the same time, I feel like I need to go out there and get a little more input from my businesses, because I came onto the council wanting to help businesses, and that's what I want to do. So those are my thoughts, at least at the moment.
Sure. I'm torn, but only for one reason. I wasn't on the council, and I was elected in November 2016, and unfortunately, this plan was a product of work that was done before. And I'm torn, because I know that there were community members, there were involved, lots of community members that worked hard on this, and we put forth a plan, and Caltrans has taken that plan that this community worked hard to develop. But on the other hand, I'm in an elected position to represent my constituents in what they have to say today. And I have to say that most of my constituents are not of express, that they're not in support of this plan. And I know that throughout time, it, our thought process, our culture, things change, and we have to, we have to adapt. So I'm struggling with, honestly, a bit of disrespect that I feel. If this council didn't vote in favor, I feel like we would be disrespecting Caltrans and taking the city Willets serious and moving forward with a plan that the community worked really hard with, and I feel like I would be disrespecting those individuals. And if I vote on the other side, then I'm also disrespecting what most of you want, Karen, today. And some of the things that came up, that, one of them that hasn't come up that I've heard about, and is best a concern of my own, is air quality. Having all of those cars idling, I remember what it was like to go from the south end of town to the north end of town and the idling. And if you're in, if you're a business in that neighborhood, or you're, there's still homes along that stretch, or there's people even riding bikes or walking, that, all of that idling and traffic is leading to increased air pollution, and so that's a concern of mine as well. If this plan had come before me and said this was gonna slow traffic down, and you said to me that the speed limit was gonna be 25 miles an hour like the rest of Main Street, there's a good chance I would have said, "Let's give it a try." But when there is no certainty that you can tell me, and I understand there's limitations, that the speed limit is not gonna slow down, that this plan isn't gonna slow down the speed limit, that, for me, that, from what I've heard from the concerns, that's just not, it's not enough. I, like I think Maureen said, I would support the upgrading of the crosswalks, the Wayfinder signage, but the lane reduction just doesn't feel, based on what constituents want, that this is a, this is a good plan. I think for many of us, we think that accidents honestly are related to speed or distractions. So what can we do to address speed and distractions? And I don't feel like this road design addresses the speed or the distractions. And so for that, and for what I've heard, my vote tonight is going to be a no vote.
I, I'm one of the few that probably likes it the way it is, and so we're gonna go from there. And I, I have to think when I'm driving, and if I'm gonna go someplace, I'm gonna have a business on the right side, then that's the side I go down, and then if I have one that I have to make the turn and go the other way to come to another spot, then that's what I do, is I go up to the intersection at the other buildings and come through the headlights, the stoplights, and down the other side and turn into that side. And it takes more time, but it's a lot safer. And if people, if you're going the speed limit that's posted, people are gonna go around you like you're just sitting still. And, but I think that's the first thing we have to do. But I'm, as far as I'm concerned, the way it's set up is better than what you have proposed. I'll just put it that way. Thank you. And thank you for coming, and thank you for dealing with us twice now.
I think a lot of people in this room know that I ride my bicycle, and I like bike lanes, but I'm very concerned about this project, and I feel as a cyclist that reducing the lanes at the south end of town to two lanes would put a target on my back and on other cyclists' back, because it will feel to the public and to motorists as if they have lost ground due to the handful of us who ride our bicycles. And I think 37 is very generous. I look every day, I own a business on Main Street, and I watch for cyclists, and I have never counted 37 cyclists on a given day. I would love it if there were 37 cyclists, but it doesn't happen. I, I was involved with the Main Street merchants, and I was involved in the planning efforts of the Main Street charrette. I was heavily involved in helping the city get the grant that actually helped us put together the application so that we could make our Main Street plan. I don't think that we have fully implemented even half of it. Our downtown portion was never finalized. We were told we would paint bulbous as an example to let people get used to them, but we have never come back and added bulbous, which were supposed to reduce the amount of space that pedestrians had to cross. We were supposed to have enhanced crosswalks that would make pedestrians feel safer, and we have not gotten those things. We have not done any of those things. And I feel like now, doing a striping project at the south end without any of the additional implementation that assures complete streets, that gives pedestrians and cyclists a feeling of safety and like they have a right to be on that road as well as motorists, without doing that, we're creating an unsafe situation. It's called a bicycle safety, what was it even proposed as? Bicycle, Willets Bicycle Safety Enhancement Project. It doesn't feel to me like it would enhance bicycle safety. It feels like it would do the opposite, and for that reason, I will also vote no to me. I hear Rod's comments, I understand how much you have put into this. I wish it had been collaborative from an earlier period so that we could get our ducks in a row and the city could try for increased implementation at the same time as the striping, but doing it piecemeal to me is a bad idea, and it goes against community.
So, Madam Mayor, just for a point of order for tonight's purpose, is this to receive the report from Caltrans and the public comments?
Yes.
You're not gonna take a vote for an action?
Thank you.
I think what we're stating is we're not in support of them, and I think that's important. Or some of us at least have made it clear where we stand.
Madge?
Just to add to what you just said, Greta, is that sometimes a whole plan has a different outcome than a partial plan or a partial implementation of that plan. And I think that's one of the concerns that I have about it, is just doing the restriping to, you know, to go from four lanes to two lanes without some of the other things that were in, the enhancement plan that the community was backing, doesn't necessarily give you the same outcome. So, you know, I still have the concerns that I raised earlier, and I think some of the data doesn't reflect, I think, is the reality, and so I hear, you know, some people would be, are just against it in general. I think I'm still wavering, but...
Were you part of the original decision?
I guess I was, because I was on the council stage. I don't, you know, I don't remember we had this kind of outpouring. I think we were very focused on the part that was the relinquishment. We were the downtown section. So I don't remember us getting really into the nuts and bolts of what would happen in the Southern Miracle Mile as much, and now we're, now we're there. And it was very short notice in this case. I agree with some of the other comments. This would have been good, we started a few months, six months ago, and had more chance to mull it over and interact with Caltrans on the planning, and we have not had that opportunity.
I think one of the, one of the problems, from my perspective, one of the reasons why the city, either staff or council or community, has not had an opportunity to weigh in is because this is what is considered a maintenance project. This isn't, this isn't like a new design-build project from Caltrans' perspective. It's a maintenance project, and they consider that to be something that doesn't typically get this level of public scrutiny and weigh in. However, for those of us who live here, it doesn't feel like maintenance, it feels like a complete redesign. And that's why I think you're seeing so much passionate feeling about it, because it doesn't feel like maintenance. Yes?
If I could just respond to some comments?
Yes, please.
Okay, so in terms of the modeled delay, the numbers that I provided are not the total delay, they are the difference from existing conditions to the new. So in addition to any delay that you might experience now, those are in addition to any delay you experience now. So I think that's part of the confusion. In terms of slowing people down and the speed limit, signs do not slow people down. The way you slow people down is you change the conditions of the roadway. Speed limits catch up to the way drivers drive. So the speed limits the day after the restriping would be as they are today, but the project, having a lane reduction, will, it's a traffic calming measure, it's a proven safety countermeasure that reduces accidents. That lane reduction will slow traffic down somewhat, and when we come out and do our next speed survey, however much it slows traffic down, that'll be the new speed limit. That's how speed limits work. So, and what we're proposing, again, it's the Willets vision, it's the low-cost solution identified in your own plan that had a lot of public input that went into that. And the lane reduction and the bike lanes are the single consistent feature in every alternative that that plan presented, and it is a proven safety countermeasure. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I hear you and I feel your frustration, and I can only imagine how honestly, how frustrated you would be. I feel disappointed to be opposing what has been approved by the previous councils and, you know, the message that was sent. I'm worried about the damage that is gonna be done in the relationship between Caltrans and the city Willets, so I don't take this lightly, but I still have to stick with my original decision.
I would echo Sabrina's comments. It is not, it is not my intent to damage the relationship between the city and Caltrans, and frankly, the partnership will continue to exist for decades. I mean, our Main Street is your Highway 20. They share a dual purpose and a dual chunk of land, and I would hope that we... And I would hope that we continue to be good partners. I suppose I, I just, I feel strongly that good design comes from collaboration. And I, and while I understand that Caltrans has looked at the city plan, I think that lessons have been learned from the downtown portion that was implemented partially. And it would have been an ideal opportunity, when looking at the south end, to say, how do we, how do we feel now about the plan? What implement, what portions of it that are on paper do we want to implement? Do we wanna make any changes? And I, and I just don't feel that there was a back and forth. You know, I sit on the MCOP committee, the council, and I heard about this idea that Caltrans was promoting, promoting a road diet about three months ago. And I asked for details. Well, there are no details yet. It's all conceptual. And I asked a couple weeks later, are there any details? There are no details yet. And I asked multiple times, and I asked our community development director, and he asked multiple times, and we always heard, there are no point, there are no details yet. It's conceptual. And then all of a sudden, we got a flyer two weeks ago with a picture of our street completely redesigned. And so it just, it just feels like we missed a boat somehow. And I don't know how, and I, and I would hope that we could get onto a better track where, when design is being considered, there's more consideration. That's it.
And I just wanted to echo that. I don't think it's a you thing. Okay, so I, I, I don't know where it got lost, but we, we kinda felt, at least at the last meeting where Brian brought up, hey, there's gonna be this meeting at the firehouse. And like, I, I went there, I brought my wife too. She had, she had some questions, and, and so that's where I was. And I thought, well, if I feel rushed, I, I don't have an opportunity. I get it when you explain there that, hey, this came up, there was an opportunity, et cetera. And I know, I know how things happen sometimes. It's sometimes in a vacuum where you're at, or wherever. And, and so, again, I don't wanna damage that relationship. I, I have questions. I guess, I think I told you the other day. I, I, if I had an opportunity, I could get behind it, to get the community behind parts of this or some of this. I mean, I knew that cutting it down was gonna get people mad. But slowing people down is what ultimately, not bicycles, is where my plan, you know, what I would like to see. Because I, again, I walk down there, and it's, it's cooking when you're going down there. And, and I'm, from a pedestrian perspective, you know, and I know what it is. People are late. I think you said you'll take your kids to the ballet or whatever. And that's exactly what people are thinking. I'm on my way to Yacaya to the ballet. And unnecessarily thinking, oh, I better watch out for the guy turning, but don't. So, again, thank you. I, I, again, I don't wanna ask businesses what they think. I have not gotten a good opportunity to do that. And so...
I think, I think honestly, that we got, we gotta know where, where we failed, where we could have done better. And I think as a city, as a city council member, I think we also need to take responsibility for the fact that we've talked many times about how we create plans. We gotta make sure that that plan's not on the shelf. We failed, in essence, to pull that plan off the shelf. There has been a plan. They, they were working from the plan that we gave them. In some ways, we failed, as a council, to look at what plans we have in place and make sure that they're still going in line with our vision. When we were working on our annual, our, our goals and our visions for the city, that's when we should have thought, what plans do we have out there that we should be incorporating or we should be thinking about as well? So I think that we need to take a, we need to take something away from this and how we can do a better job as well. Because, because I do feel a little bit bad that Caltrans is working on this project thinking that the city is gonna support this, that the community's gonna support this, because many people came out and supported it. And the council supported it, and now here they are, finally like dumb home and before, maybe could have done a better job. They agree. They could have done a better job. But we also could have done a better job, and I hope that, that we do a better job. And I apologize that we didn't think. And we will certainly be thinking better about other plans that may be on the shelf that we need to take another look at and see if they're still in line with today's vision.
Well said. I don't know where we go from here. I mean, you've heard the input from the community. You've heard the input from the council. I don't know what the next step is.
If you can provide your input in writing, that'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah, I would suggest, Mayor, that we put this matter on for our next, our next meeting for formal action. So we, so the council can vote on it and either communicate their approval or their non-approval of the project.
And suggestions for future opportunities.
Will that be within the deadline? September 6th.
Thirteenth.
Oh, sorry, 13th. Second, Wednesday. Sorry. I think direction is clear. We're just gonna formalize what you've heard this evening. Is that right?
Yes. Thank you very much for the presentation, and thank you to everyone who showed up and voiced your concerns tonight. Yes, we're gonna take a recess and let everyone kinda reset here. It's been five minutes.
Thank you, Sabrina.
All right, I would like to reconvene the Willits City Council meeting.
Can we shut that?
My email is on there, and the other council member, you can send me an email too.
Okay, all right.
And there's a phone number on there too.
Okay.
All right, at 8:35 PM, I will call this meeting reconvened, and we are on item three. No, we finished three. Nope, we have C on item three, so we now have another public...
Three C.
Three C, another public hearing, and this is regarding the closeout of the state community development block grant that funded City of Willits Business Assistance Loan Program. We will hear tonight from our Community Development Director, Mr. Dusty Dooley.
Thank you, Mayor. You're gonna like this one. Okay, so essentially what we're doing is having this public hearing for the benefit of meeting the criteria of the grant we received from HCD here. So I don't know that I have any new information to share with the council, but basically the intent or the requirement is to report out on what we accomplished, and in this case, very much the success of use of these grant funds. So the city was awarded $541,551 in grants funds through the CARES Act that was distributed through the CDBG program, and $470,000 of that was what's called activity funds, and that was used to assist small businesses within Willits. And $71,000 and change was used for grant administration, so this was used to pay both for staff time administering and creating the program, as well as for the two consulting groups, well, EDFC, Economic Development Administration, and the CDC Consulting Group out of Lake County. So they assisted in doing the loan underwriting for the businesses and quite a bit of administration work, as well as helping establish the program for us. And loans went out to a number of businesses ranging from $30,000 to $40,000. The money was used for inventory, it was used for payroll, those were the primary uses for it. Of the 13 businesses that received assistance through this loan program, ultimately, the data showed that it helped create six jobs and retained 73 jobs in our community. And the other, the really cool part about this is the state allowed us to set it up to where, provided the businesses retained their employees for the three-month period from that point when they were given the loan to three months later, those loans were 100% forgivable, and the city did not ask for any payment in between that timeframe. All those loans had been forgiven, the full $470,000. So that's the closeout report for that grant.
Thank you. Any comments from the council?
Just one question, Dusty, any stats on whether some of those jobs stayed after all this time, or we don't know?
This data is pretty recent, but I don't have any updated information beyond that snapshot that was, you know, a month and a half old.
Oh, okay, a month and a half old, did you say?
Something like that.
Okay.
Anything else from council? I just would like to say that I wish this item had been before the previous item, because one of the many things that I heard during the discussion outside of council chambers was, why doesn't the city do anything for our businesses? And here's an example of the city doing a tremendous thing for our businesses, and so I would like to thank you, Dusty, for your efforts to bring those grants, to bring that grant money to our city and to benefit our business community. I really think that was a win for us and a win for you. Okay. I will now open that to the public to hear any comments from the public regarding this item. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say or ask? Okay, so I'll close the public hearing and bring it back up to the dais. Would anybody like to...
I'll make a motion, having received the verbal report that staff...
There's no...
There's no? I thought we were supposed to submit documents.
It was just receiving the reports.
Oh, I think, oh, submitting documents required, oh, we're just submitting, okay.
So we have received our report and conducted our public hearing.
Okay.
All right, so we will move on to item four, which is enactment of ordinances. We have none tonight. That takes us to our consent calendar. The city council considers matters listed under the consent calendar as routine. The council can take action with a single motion and roll call vote. Tonight's consent calendar just includes the minutes from the August 9th city council meeting with the correction that was noted earlier by Dolores. Does council have any comments about the minutes from the August 9th meeting? Any members of the public have comments or questions about the minutes from the August 9th meeting? Okay, we'll bring it back up, and would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the August 9th minutes.
We have a motion and a second, Dolores, and we have a roll call.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Monthly activity reports do not require action by the city council that are of public interest. We have none on tonight's agenda. We now move to commissions, agencies, and authorities, but we have no items under that, so we move now to our city manager's reports and recommendations. The first item is a resolution to terminate the declaration of a local emergency for COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. So unfortunately, this is an item that has broken the cracks. As noted in the agenda summary to the council, we were then under the impression, and it has happened before, where a federal declaration, and a state, and a county is tiered, and then essentially, since the emergency wasn't initiated, or we declared the first emergency, we weren't the first in that tier, that the other actions essentially dissolved our declaration. Lo and behold, it did not. So we're asking the council to consider the resolution before you to end the emergency declaration.
Thank you. Any comments from council? Any comments from the public about this item? All right, I'll bring it back up and entertain a motion.
I would like to move that we adopt the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I find it ironic that we're doing this after I'm...
It wasn't planned that way.
I've been three and a half years working retail, not getting this darn thing, and now, that's wonderful. Okay, verbal report.
I have no other items. Is there any item that the council wants to follow up on, any clarification, any topics, concerns?
I don't have anything. Anybody else from council?
I guess I would like to have us consider some kind of follow-up, maybe a closed session to respond to the comments that we heard from the P O A.
It is my understanding that the comments addressed personnel matters that are not typically...
That's why I said that we would schedule a closed session at a future time.
We'll look into that. I'm not sure that there is an exception of the Brown Act that'll allow us to meet in closed session to respond to that. It's not, there was not a, for example, a threat of litigation. There was some...
It is a personnel matter.
Right, so...
So generally, we each would speak privately with the city manager about any concerns that we might have that we can collectively as a group?
That's right.
Correct. So that's what I have for council's pleasure tonight.
Thank you, Brian. All right, that moves us to item nine, department recommendations. These are action and discussion items. The first is the presentation of a prospective RCHDC Hale Creek Village Housing Project on Margie Drive, and we will hear from our Community Development Director, Dusty Dooley. Before you start, Dusty, I also just wanted to remind council, I did hear from a member of the public during the break who said she was having a hard time hearing all of us, so just to be aware of that. Maybe it's because the doors were open earlier and it does get echoey, but anyway, so.
Comment on that comment?
For staff to consider as well.
Because I watch a lot of the political stuff and debates and all that, and they have a mic system on and off, so I mean, we might, as a city, might invest into better quality of speaker and able to more broadcast, so we have an aging population, probably sounds like, that are kind of a little weak on the hearing.
Thank you for that comment. Yeah, she did say that she thought we should all be pulling the microphones closer, and I had to let her know that those aren't actually miking into the room, they're just for the benefit of the camera, so appreciate the comment. And Dusty, sorry to interrupt you.
No, no worries, Mayor. Yeah, so we're gonna hear from RCHDC. RCH Rural Communities Housing Development Corporation, RCHDC, they're a low-income housing provider. They've done a lot of great projects throughout this county and others. They have gotten the, have purchased, I believe, the property, it's an 8.9 acre vacant property. It sits between Highway 20 and Hale Creek there on the south end of town, just south of the, was it the Latter Day Saints Church there? Right now, it looks like a dirt bike track. It would be accessed by the terminus of Margie Drive currently. They are very much looking forward to presenting a housing development at that location, and are in the process of seeking grant funds to support it. The property is zoned R2. The intent of the property is to support a project such as that, and you do have a description in the agenda summary there. But having said that, I think we're ready to receive a presentation from RCHDC staff here.
Thank you so much for waiting all this time.
My name's Daniel McIntyre. I'm the Chief Operations Officer for Rural Communities Housing Development Corporation. Originally, Rebecca was scheduled to be here to present. She's our Director of Property Management, but she had a slight accident over the weekend, so it prevented her from not being here. Also with me is Angie Figaro, who is our Director of Development. So I'm gonna do most of the presentation. If it gets into the technicalities of the development cycle, that's what Angie has to answer. I'm gonna give you a little history about RCHDC real quick, and then we'll get into the project. Our mission is to provide decent affordable housing for low and moderate income individuals. We were originally, we were founded and incorporated in 1975 as a spinoff of North Coast Opportunities, NCOs, a local community agency. We became physically independent of NCO in 1983, and we've been developing housing serving Lake, Medesino, Humboldt, Shasta, Siskiyou, Tahima, and Dunlop Counties, and we continue to expand as far as we can in rural Northern California. We don't focus in the larger cities, we do rural development. We currently manage over 1,400 units. Of those, about 497 are seniors. We have about 665 family units, and we currently have a portfolio of 333, 330 special needs projects. We've been developing special needs projects since 1992, so we have quite some history on this. And then we have partners in various communities throughout the state and with the state itself. So the goals of this development really do line up with your guys' housing element, is to promote and develop new housing, various types and various locations, and we've picked the Margie Drive area to start that process. And we're trying to do this to develop and meet the needs of multiple income groups. Now, while this might be a limited income group at this location, that frees up housing that might be tied up at other locations and serve those that are under housed. We want to promote the affordability of all types of housing. That's why we do seniors, families, but unfortunately for us as a development company, sometimes we have to follow the path of the funding, and sometimes there's funding more for special needs than there's seniors, families, there's multitudes of ways forward in this process. And we strongly believe in ensuring non-discriminatory factors in our housing. We positively enforce affirmative fair housing, and we think that's very key to housing in society in general. And we try to promote effective land use and sustainability in all our building. All the stuff we've been building lately, since starting in 2017, has effectively been net zero. We produce more electricity on the sites than we do consume. Unfortunately, that does, that zero doesn't necessarily equate to no power bill for us, because we can produce 200 kilowatts, and we can use 200 kilowatts, and PG&E buys it on $10.00. Oops, I had the wrong button. Should've brought my glasses. So our vision for this location is single-story cottage-style buildings. There's 38 one-bedrooms, eight two-bedrooms, and one three-bedroom onsite manager unit. They're energy efficient, and they're compatible with the surrounding, built for the environment, and accommodate the needs of the residents. So the majority of all the units downstairs, while they may not all be ADA compliant, they're all adaptable, so we can adapt to multitudes of needs. There's gonna be landscaping, there's gonna be garden areas, outside recreation areas, and onsite laundry. And I won't say it follows the old-school zero-scaping, where there's no landscaping, but is water and drought tolerant, so it's not a lot of landscaping for multitudes of reasons. We don't want to use a lot of water, and we don't want to have to maintain it, so you're not gonna see big, huge, open green grass areas. It's nice, planted stuff. And we have some stuff, if you ever on Brush Street in Ukiah, we have two brand-new developments down there, we just didn't follow the same building pattern. There's a community building, and then RCHDC provides onsite coordination for ongoing activities at the site for the individuals and/or to service linkages, whatever the individual may need or the individual families may need. And then we have partner agencies in the area that would also service the site. This is kind of the area here, you can see the red outline, that is the lot that we had purchased, and there's two sample drawings of what the one-bedrooms and the two-bedroom units look like. This is kind of the timeline of construction, which is difficult to see on the slide, so I apologize, but the projected start date, if I can read here, would be the end of next, the end of next year. We have to follow a funding cycle, and our funding cycle keeps getting pushed out by the state. Right now, tentatively, we would apply for tax credits in July of 2024, and we would start construction in 2025, if everything goes according to plan, and the state housing authority does not push out our needed initial funding strength further than it already is. Which I think that's not gonna get pushed again, because it's already been pushed three times, but I can't say that. Who knows? Oops. So these are just some pictures of some developments we've done. This one here, this one here is the North Street Apartments, it's actually over on the North Street, it's down kind of by the park. This is Bevan's Courts, this is a special needs project we have over in Lake County, it sits up on top of Bevan's Court. This one here is Olive Grove, this one was built in Corning, California. We just got done with this construction, we leased it up in March of this year. These are the inside of some of the units. I don't actually know what site this is from, this is probably from Olive Grove or Ork Creek in Ukiah, but they're all similar design. This project's Willow Terrace, it's in Ukiah, it's right at the end of Gobi and Leslie Street. It sits up one acres, and it's 38 units of affordable housing. This one happens to be all studios, and we're not proposing studios for this location.
Are studios smaller?
Studios are smaller studios, we usually run around, minimum studio size is about 174 square feet, we have some of those that are caved in. The ones at Willow Terrace, the one I just showed you, those are about 340 to 376 square feet per unit, so it serves, the Willow Terrace location in Ukiah serves a completely different demographic than the demographic we're trying to fund at this location, so that's what it called for studio apartments on that side. Plus, it was a density thing, because we only had a one acre to design on, so we had to stay within our density sizes. And another thing with studios, if we do all studios, we have to do all studios, but once we do some one bedrooms, we have to throw in some two bedrooms, so there's, all the different funding sources have min's and maxes of how you have to provide housing.
Thank you.
This is a picture of one of the community rooms and some of the laundry facilities that we offer. We also offer onsite service offices for local service agencies to work out, along with our staff. This is a project of Pine Hill up in Eureka, we just completed construction on this. Everything except for some power meters in August of last year. We didn't actually get power meters installed until December, but we did complete construction. It's fully leased up in Eureka on the southern end of town. And this is some of the units inside of those apartments up there.
You furnish them, huh?
We furnish the ones that are special needs, and again, it's funding-related, so the projects that I've been showing you for Olive Grove and Eureka were funded under a program called No Plastic Home. Basically, it's a housing-first model that provides housing for those that are homeless or at risk of homelessness, that have high mental need capacity, either chronic mental illness, or other types of mental illness, or, you know, diagnosed dysfunctions. And what happens on those is we have to provide the furniture, and we do that for multitudes of reasons, because it reduces our effects of bedbugs or other mitigation circumstances that come in, and it provides them a stable environment to live in, because most of the individuals might be homeless, and they don't have any furniture, so they're just sleeping on the floor, you know, and that's not beneficial to society, and it's not beneficial to help them improve their lives. Not all the units are furnished, though, it's usually just a portion of the community. This is Ork Creek Commons, this is a Phase 2 project we built in Ukiah. There's two projects right next to each other, and if they look like mirrors, they are, because we basically just mirrored the one project to the next project next to it. And we're actually working on a development for the third lot we own right next to Ork Creek Commons on Brush Street in Ukiah. And this is the inside of some of those units. And as you can see in the photo of the bathroom, most of the downstairs ones have adaptable baths, so adaptable baths have either rolling showers like this, or there's some that have a slope-cut tub. Really comes down to budgets and final design considerations.
So how many adaptables do you see in this whole one?
All of them would be adaptable, but as a minimum, it's 5%?
I believe it's up to 10% that are accessible, and the rest would be adaptable.
So if it was, so we'd probably have three handicap one-bedrooms and one handicap ADA accessible completely, three one-bedrooms and one two-bedroom, just due to the size of them, because we would round up, but they would all be adaptable. And again, it comes down to the final funding configurations, because some state funds have one-re requirement, some federal funds have a different requirement, so we have to go with the most restrictive. And this just shows the community room and the laundry room at Ork Creek. And this is just another photo of the first version of Ork Creek, it's just literally the mirror of Ork Creek 2. Well, Ork Creek 2 is the mirror of this one. As you can see, there's a consistency in the way we design these. We try to keep them simple, we try to make them as cost and energy efficient as possible. That's it. Is there any, I'm here to open to ask, answer as many questions as you might have.
One is more of a curiosity, that area, honestly, I've seen cars stuck in the mud down there. I'm assuming it's not so much flood, but maybe slide-prone, is that something you've looked at? And then also, given the project and your funding, would this be something open to folks outside the area, or folks inside the area, or would our folks inside the area that are residentially challenged be put at the first of the lines, so to speak, or are we going to be bringing folks from between Willows or Oakland here?
Okay, so let me answer the first part. We have done some geo studies on that location. I believe there was some challenges with the soil condition, which would require us to do additional engineering prepping ahead of time. There's nothing at the location that is of a concern to us. Ork Creek 1 and Ork Creek 2 were both built in floodplains, and we've actually elevated all of our buildings out of floodplains just to avoid, and when I say floodplains, out of the 100-year flood zone, to avoid those more complicated insurance issues down the road. But from an engineering standpoint, there's nothing there that our engineers can't work around with, you know, different soil conditions or different engineering fees. As far as the... As far as the occupancy, as with any housing, this most likely would be funded with some source of funds from HCD, which is Housing Community Developmental State. And then we would leverage that funding and any other funding sources we got for federal or tax credits, which is 9% tax credit that is directed down from the federal government. Given those funding sources, the housing has to be open to the general public, not located to Willets. What our experience has showed us, and I've been doing this since 2015, my insurance, so the populations are not very mobile, right? We, for example, we can look at Willa Terrace. Willa Terrace was opened in 2018 to service Mendocino County. The majority of the residents, when I say majority, I'd say 95% of them came from the city of Ukiah because people did not want to move to the city of Ukiah. And those that did move to the city of Ukiah stayed about three months, didn't like it, and moved back to their previous residents that were not fit for human habilities. So while there is a possibility that people from out of town might come here, we have not experienced that. We've seen that the populations that are in the income brackets where we serve, which is basically from 0% income to 60% AMI, don't have high mobility, right? They're limited on their mobility. They're not, they're not going to go, oh, well, they're opening up a new housing. I just want to move over there. Because their support services and support system that they may have are not here. What you're going to see is you're going to see a lot of individuals that might be under housed. So under housing is like, well, like I was when I was growing up, right? I spent a lot of time at my grandma's house because maybe our home wasn't habitable. Me living on my grandma's couch wasn't stable housing. So you're going to see that reduced.
And that's kind of what I'm looking at. I know a lot of people who are living with extended family here that would love to get into something like that.
Yeah. And so that's going to open that up. And there, like I said, it's a split, it's a split demographic. We have some set of sites for special needs. That's a snippet that was pulled out of our MHP application. And that helps bring that housing in to the area. So we have a portion, 49%, that's special needs and then 51% that's not special needs. And that helps balance and build a community.
Do you have a project timeline?
Yeah. So if, if we get the NOFA from HCD in October. Yeah. We will get an award in January. If we get that award in January, we would apply for federal tax credits in March. We would know if we got that award in July. If we got the award in July of 2024, we would start construction probably around November or December of 2024. And it's about an 18 month build time after that. So we would be leasing up probably the very beginning of 2026.
So your timeline actually shows construction starting in January of 2025, but you're saying that it could start a couple of months earlier?
There's a time, well, we're going off the assumption that everything follows the standard timeline. Depending on some of the investment partners on the backside, it could start towards the end of 2024 or the beginning of 2025. Effectively, when we get a tax credit award, we have, the clock starts ticking and we have to break ground in so many days. So it really depends on that final award date and those have been moving, you know, a little bit. So we were a little more conservative on this schedule than we've seen in the past. We've seen our construction start sometime in December, sometimes. Sometimes it's January, sometimes it's December when those, on the second round awards.
Great. So on that timeline, you would be coming back to us with the actual site plan and the environmental document and all that stuff after you've gotten through this?
Yeah, we would go, we would work with Dusty and go through the whole entire process you have for design review and, you know, CEQA's and NEPA's depending on what funding sources we have in yet.
So I just wanted to say that I wish we could get the timeline faster because we need that housing and it sounds like a really wonderful project.
I wish we could speed it up. Unfortunately, from, from the time we conceive something to the time we break down, it's usually two and a half to three years. And that's just an unfortunate matter of, you know, limited public funding, limited seed money. Because we're able to take seed money that public funds give us and usually leverage it 11 to 12 to 1. So if we'll get a million dollars or a million and a half dollars, you know, we could do an 11 to 13 million dollar project with that seed money. And it's the limit of that seed money that takes, you know, time. And that's where we're subject to like HCD pushing, pushing, pushing. Because the more they push, the longer we have to wait and the more costs go up.
Right. Thank you so much for your interest in investing in our community.
Thank you.
Dusty.
Dusty has a question.
Yeah, just to make it clear for council in case it's not already. So what we're anticipating is when the funding comes into place, RCHDC would be submitting a site plan review application to the community development department that would go out to all the various departments. And within that process, what we're doing is ensuring that the project is compatible with city standards. So whether it's developing sidewalks, access, meeting apartment complex regulations for recreational components, parking, you know, setbacks, you know, just all those standards. But again, this is an R2 zone property and the intent of that zoning, along with our housing element, is to support a project of this nature. So those don't necessarily come back and counsel for any type of decision. Although it's not to say we couldn't bring forward, you know, an informational item and certainly keep you updated on their progress throughout the project.
So you're saying it would be allowed, right, if they meet all those standards?
Correct. There, at this point, there's nothing that where we understand they're asking for any discretionary permit or approval from the city.
And Madam Mayor, if I may say one other thing to kind of elaborate on what Dusty says. While we don't have to come back for your guys' approval, we would hold public meetings up in the Willets area to get input and feedback. Because we want to be a partner in the community. We just don't want to come in and, we work with many developers or alongside many developers that just come in and cram stuff in communities. We want to be a long lasting partner, not just be like, here's housing, we're out. Because that's, we've been here for too long to do that.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one more question?
Yeah.
Do you envision just being a driveway from the city street and then all of the property would basically be non-city street?
Actually, we envision only using half of the parcel we bought for the first part of it. We, we have limitations on the size we can build just due to funding models.
Yeah.
Something of that size, probably by the time we get to that funding level, is probably going to cost 22 to 25 million dollars by the time we're done. The next lot, which is the section of the lots that's closer to Highway 101 or Highway 20, we would start working early in the development phase to get an encroachment onto the freeway. There might be some issues with that, but the main access to the first parcel would be on Margie Lane.
I guess I'm curious, we wouldn't be dedicating any city streets out of this project?
Oh, no.
This would all be private?
Yes. All the roads and stuff inside there would be, would be on the complex.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And it sounds like a good project. Thank you.
Very exciting. And thank you again for waiting all this time to make your presentation.
No problem. We appreciate the public input. I spend many a time driving through here in the summertime and I actually live in Lucerne, so I've been on the other end of the Lucerne project, which is two of the things because Lucerne is already too late. So, and it's still.
Maybe, don't go anywhere yet. I think we can open it up to public comment.
Yes, yes, yes. Real quick. So let's open it up. If anybody has any comments or questions regarding this project. Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Larry. I'm Jerry O'Malley.
So, so one of my concerns would be, it's, see, you're buttoning up against a sweat equity. Some of those houses back on Alice Drive in Margie Lane, those were all sweat equity houses. People that were by the government were paid to build them and they were theirs and they had to do the thing. So what I'm seeing is a lot of, looks like motels going in behind them. And so I'm worried about a certain amount of element getting in there. Then all of a sudden, it's all about, we have local PD that's got to show up and solve issues. Does this project provide any kind of security on staff to keep the use of any kind of illegal narcotics or any problems down to be able to benefit the community, not be a drag on our resources? That would be my concern. Because you don't know who's moving in.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Appreciate the comments and Mr. Walker has a good point. You know, we did self-help sweat equity homes for many years and I'll say might be some of our stuff we did before I started. There's no guarantee we can control everything. But what we've found is as we build a community, those elements don't want to be around. We don't provide onsite security, but we do provide onsite security cameras and we work with the local police departments and the jurisdictions to be a crime deterrent in the area. It usually will take between two months to four months to start building that sense of community there. Because as Mr. Walker pointed out, we don't necessarily know who comes in there. But I can, as the broker of record for them, the liability of the property and the real estate side of it falls on my broker's license. So I'm very keen on not having individuals that are going to be problematic or negative to the community as a whole or the community that we're designing and developing. So I can't guarantee we'd be free of problems, but I can guarantee we do address the problems.
And you're like a landlord, whether it's any other apartment complex, so you would deal with your, I guess, problem people?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And unfortunately, in today's society, it is a little bit harder for landlords to deal with those that are problems, you know, than it was pre-COVID. I feel for everybody that suffered from COVID. I have dealt with many evictions from those that have not suffered from COVID, but just see as an opportunity to be a nuisance.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public have any comments or questions about this item? All right. Bring it back up here and thank you for the presentation. All right. The next item is the adoption of a resolution establishing the appropriations limit for 22, 23 fiscal year. And we will hear from our city finance director, Manuel Orozco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, city manager. If you don't mind, I'd actually like to lump in this item and the next item over, which is the exact same style of item, just kind of presenting both.
For two different fiscal years.
But there's two separate resolutions.
Two different, separate resolutions. Okay. So I guess I can't lump them together.
You can. There just needs to be separate action of each resolution.
All right. So right now, before you are two resolutions. They're establishing the appropriations limit for, one for fiscal year 22, 23, and the other for fiscal year 24. The GAN appropriation limit is a yearly activity where a calculation is done on the revenue, tax revenue, and sets a limit of appropriations for each particular fiscal year. For 22, 23, the resolution sets the calculated limit at about 7,919,373. We have appropriations approximately 5, or actually, 5,514,600, which is 2,404,773 less than the actual one for fiscal year 22, 23. As for 23, 24, the GAN limit was calculated at 8,227,436. Our appropriations for that fiscal year in the biannual budget was for 5,683,777, which is 2,543,659 dollars less than the appropriation limit. Each of these have been posted out in the front so that it's satisfying the GAN statute stating that it has to be posted for at least two weeks before it's presented, it can't be presented to you guys. And, and that is my presentation.
Thank you. Do any council members have questions for me on either of these items?
I do just, I know that they're both here because we have a two-year budget. Is that correct?
Yes.
And should this have come a little sooner or?
It should have. When I first got on, it was basically, I think I did like three of these or two. I can't remember which now. I thought I did two or three. But yeah, and this third one slipped through and we don't get the information on the 23, 24 until May.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it should have been done sooner. I think I just got the possibility.
Okay. I'll just, for purposes of my brain wrapping around. Okay.
Anybody else? Okay. I'd like to open this to the members of the public. Does anyone have any questions regarding these appropriation limits? Okay. We'll bring it back up and we'll entertain two separate motions.
Move approval of the appropriation limit for the 22, 23 fiscal year as presented.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Dolores, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Strong, yes, Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes. And now the next one for 23, 24. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I might as well make that motion as well. Move approval of the appropriation limit for the 23, 24 fiscal year as presented.
I'll second again.
All right. A motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Strong?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Marica?
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Manny.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes our department recommendations and action items. We will now move on to department monthly reports. These are produced at the end of each month and delineate the actions taken by our staff in the various departments. Kathy, do you have anything you'd like to add to your written report?
I don't. Thank you.
I would like to say I really appreciated the small detail of all fire extinguishers being inspected. I know that seems like a silly little thing, but I think that many of us forget how much it takes to maintain the facilities in our city. And I love that the details are attended to. So thank you. All right. Community development. Dusty, would you like to add anything? You going to have anything for Dusty?
No.
I would like to just say on a personal note, I appreciate our new code enforcement officer.
Yes, he's clearly been a good fit and I'm glad that we have him as well.
In my neighborhood, he had a lot of barking dog issues and he has been stellar in crouching people in a respectful, firm way and it's helping, so.
Beautiful. I will certainly share with others.
Thank you. Finance.
Nothing for to add, so.
Thank you. I sound terrible up here. Police Department. There you are.
Thank you. Nothing to add to the report. But as I think was discussed previously, I will be leaving my position effective, what are we on? September 7th, I'm sorry. And I just wanted to let the community know it's been a privilege to lead this department and men and women in this department that, that we've done for the past almost three years. And it's been a pleasure working with my fellow department heads and as we've worked together on some projects and assisted each other wherever we could. And just wanted to say thank you to the community and to everybody that supported us and supported our members. So, thank you.
Thank you for your service, Chief. Thank you.
All right. Services and facilities.
I have nothing specific to add, but at the time, it's clear that the group contract not only got awarded, but began. So that is well on its way.
Then we're, we're still in holding for, waiting for parts for West Mendocino?
Yes. It is a very frustrating process, but we're trying to work diligently on their submittals and have gone back and forth. It's a bit of a chain reaction because this company that's providing the products is very slow also. So we will be discussing what happens with that subject as we get closer to winter time.
Thank you. All right. Council members, any questions for Elan? All right. Utilities. That's you also, right?
It's me also. Scott is not here. I don't have anything to add and hopefully I can answer any questions, but.
Maybe a recap because we're going to have to talk about the water, wastewater ad hoc meeting the other day, but I think you gave us an update on the building up here. And I'm telling her, what did we have for wastewater? Well, no, that was wastewater. So.
Right, we, we have a, we have a building design that we, we will, I think we brought to you, that will be considered what we would like. It will go in the bin, you know, they can choose to provide an or equal product, but we did get that from the manufacturer, and it has a kind of a generic title on it, so one step at a time, but the, the engineer will, will have those specifications to provide to the overall manufacturer.
Thank you.
I did want to point out to any members of the public who are watching on television, if you don't have access to the packet, really good news is that our current reservoir capacity as of the beginning of August is ninety percent, and that's even with an increase in our water usage July of 2023 compared to July of 2022. So we're in a good water position, that feels good for the first time in years. All right, any members of the public, the council, sorry, you have any questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much for the staff reports. And now we'll move on to city council announcements, communications, and reports. Madge?
Okay, yes, so Solentine Power is not meeting in September, so that won't be until the first Thursday of October. I had announced at our meeting two weeks ago that I was going to have both EDFC and the Solid Waste Management Board meeting the next day. It turned out, we did have EDFC, and we are on track with that, but the Mendocino Solid Waste Management Authority had an error in their public posting of the, of the agenda, which Dolores was able to, she noticed kind of at the last minute, so they were not able to meet legally, because they had a different time in one place than the other. Unfortunately, in my opinion, they've delayed that meeting by an entire month. I was hoping that they would reschedule it, you know, rather quickly, but it's going to be September fourteenth, and so that will be the day after our next city council meeting. And as I said two weeks ago, I was concerned that we weren't, we, the board of MCO was not getting really sufficient information to know whether that program is really being well-managed now that we're privatizing the service and relying on the city of Ukiah for administrating. And I still don't know, because it's not going to be meeting until September fourteenth, and probably won't get any information until the week before. I'm, I'm just sort of crossing my fingers that they know what they're doing, but we are, we, the board, are not getting much information.
Thank you for that report. Sabrina?
I attended the MCAG meeting because MTA was the top, the conversation evolved around what was happening with the mobility solution in regards to Brooktrails, Hopland, Coblo, Lakeville, and we just basically listened to their presentation, the board accepted it, and not really sure what the next step is. Yeah, we're just gonna wait and see. They changed a lot of their recommendations to what we were recommending, and we're not, we're not a hundred percent sure what all of it means. It honestly feels like there was a, there was a steady den, we still don't have money, try harder to figure it out, is what I got after. So we're working hard, trying to figure out how to meet the needs, knowing that there's now a steady den that says that we in fact have a need, which we knew we did. We'll keep working on it.
Thank you. Hillary?
We gave the report with a building that's solid, that's a wastewater, I think that's essentially what's in the meeting. Jerry, was there anything else that I missed?
I don't think so. I think you just got an update on the, some of the water plant, right?
Well, for the water flow, you hand out.
Oh, that's right, that's, he's got a handout that'll be on the website, that'll kind of guide people, whether, if it's a brown water thing, so, so they can kind of self-help themselves. Is it, is it a NUS thing, then call, follow the steps. If it's a U thing, you know, this is how you can figure out. He's basically came in with a, and thank you again, Olivia, for reminding, he came in with a jug of water that he'd got from residences, our residents down at Harris Manor, and it was clear, and I think it was a deal where they actually went and got it out of the spigot coming in from this, from the street. And so whatever the brown water thing was, at least at that point, it wasn't a city thing, and sometimes what it could be is their water heater or old pipes. And that's a good way, but if it is a, a city issue, then they need to know, and that's what this guide will help the public kind of walk through. So then they urged them to basically call the city so that they, they can try and figure out what the issue is.
More mailing goes out like crazy.
Okay, good.
There's hard copies available at City Hall.
On the website as well.
And I, and I think I'd encourage them to maybe put them at some key locations, just so that the public has an opportunity, again, for some folks that don't do internet, I think was our concern. I think that was it. Yep, thank you. My turn, I think I had the League of Cities meeting up in Fortuna on the eighteenth, and we had a kind of a nice presentation by the Fortuna Police Department. They, they showed up their K-9, apparently they've trained it, they've got two K-9s, and they've secured funding, one on a grant and the other one through community donations, and they're training them for fentanyl, to look for that. And then we had a presentation from the Redwood Coast Offshore Wind Project, that they're going to be doing a wind farm out to the ocean, and they're staffing up. It's a company called RWE, and they're out of Britain, I guess, but they, they've got the, I guess, just like offshore oil leases, they've got the lease from the state to set this up, and they're going to be hiring people up on the North Coast, and so more to come out in the area for that, so. And, and the other one was, we had a presentation from Yana, I'm probably slaughtering her name, Bella Chavik, from the County Director of Forest Advisory for the University of California Cooperative Extension at Humboldt and Down North Counties, and she talked about wildfire impacts on the California insurance market. It sounds like it's going to continue to go up, and basically, if you get to that point to where you can't afford it, there's a secondary market, but it's not going to be cheap. They, they basically, it's like earthquake insurance for some folks, except now it's going to be fire insurance that you're going to be out, and in some areas, you're going to be on, I can't remember the name of the program, but you're basically going to be in the high-risk pool. And again, like she said, they have to offer it, but it doesn't have to be cheap, and that's becoming more and more an issue in our urban wildfire interface out there, that it's just kind of a fire term, but apparently it's affecting a lot of residents in rural areas, so that's what I've got.
Thank you. And I missed the MCAG meeting last week. I was in bed. All right, anybody have any good and welfare they would like to share?
There's another art block on, is it Saturday, September 2nd? These commercial studies?
I'm not participating this time, but yes, there is.
I've enjoyed them so far, so I think they're a nice addition to our community.
I'd just say school started, so everybody slowed down, so.
Thank you. All right, no closed session tonight, so at nine twenty-nine, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.